Good evening Vacaville. This is the regularly scheduled City Council meeting here in the City of Vacaville, June 24, 2025 at 6:00 PM at City Hall. May I have a roll call?
Council Agency Authority members Stockton.
Here.
Ritchie.
Here.
Silva.
Here.
Fremell.
Here.
Wiley.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Chapman.
Here.
Mayor, Chair Carle.
Here. And there was a notice that there would be a remote by Councilmember Silva, but he is here tonight, so we will not have to go through that process. So with that, if you are able, please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge. Councilmember Stockton, will you meet us for the pledge?
Yes. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any changes to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mayor, the one change we do have is that we are pulling the closed session item.
Okay. So other than the closed session, everything remains. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so next we will move on to the consent calendar. There's items A through I. Any member of the council or the public wishing to pull an item? Vice Mayor Chapman?
No.
Okay, sorry, your light was on. Okay, so I'll disregard. It was on.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I believe there's a presentation.
That's right. I skipped right over that. How did I do that? Okay, we do have a presentation tonight, so we're not going into the consent calendar just yet. It's Parks and Recreation Month, and there is a proclamation presentation, but with us tonight, there is our Public Works Director Bruce Mulder and our Rec Manager Elizabeth Crisante. I believe you're in the House? And you have a short presentation, I do believe? All right. You were thinking, well, you had other plans for tonight, didn't you?
Presentation pop up here?
There you go.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. This is my first time in this chair, so I'm excited to be here. So I'm Bruce Mulder, your Director of Parks and Recreation, and with me is Elizabeth Crisante, our Recreation Manager. So we are once again here to celebrate July as National Parks and Recreation Month. In addition, as recognized by California Parks and Recreation Society, it is also Parks Make Life Better Month. So last year, staff provided you with fairly robust overview of our department and all the things we do. This year, we'd like to take this opportunity to dig a little deeper into some of the far-reaching impacts Parks and Recreation has on our community and on our local economy. So we employ 26 full-time staff and 200 part-time staff to provide programs and events for Vacaville's growing community of over 100,000 residents. In addition, because we sit halfway between Sacramento and the Bay Area, we also draw people in from all those other areas. Parks and Recreation is about fostering inclusion while engaging and creating a sense of community, so we welcome people from all over and all walks of life. Parks and Recreation is a core component of the city's strategic plan, specifically Goal Number Three and Goal Number Five, which enhance Vacaville's quality of life and promote community engagement and increase equity and inclusion. In a research report published by the Trust for Public Land in 2024, positive correlations were drawn between cities who invested in more parks, trails, and open space. These cities experienced workforce retention, lower unemployment, they also attracted new businesses, as well as experienced higher occupancy rates for both residential and commercial real estate. The report illustrated that investments in improving a community's quality of life creates a positive cycle. High-quality Parks and Recreation places attract workers, which attract employers, which in turn attract more investments and jobs. Vacaville Parks and Recreation promotes equity by ensuring there is an equitable distribution of parks and facilities throughout the city. Parks and Recreation promotes community by creating collective spaces for neighborhood gatherings, cultural celebrations, and interactions with other neighbors, and it promotes quality of life through personal health and wellness and human development. As Parks and Recreation is integral to the city's strategic plan, it also has a positive impact on the local economy. According to the National Recreation and Park Association report, the economic impact of local parks, local public park and recreation agencies in the U.S., generated over $200 billion in economic activity and supported almost 1.1 million jobs from operations and capital spending. So using this report format, we estimate that Vacaville's Parks and Recreation Department generates over $18 million in economic activity. This underscores that Parks and Recreation is essential to the vitality and growth of our city. Parks and open space are at the heart of Parks and Recreation. According to a 2024 findings from the National Recreation and Park Association, 78% surveyed participants who reside on the West Coast live within walking distance to a park or recreation facility, and additionally, 86% of the same respondents said that proximity of a park or recreation facility is highly desirable when choosing where to live. The study also found that residents living near a park are more likely to use active means of traveling to a park or recreation facility. So these statistics reinforce that Parks and Recreation supports the city's strategic plan and efforts to make Vacaville a highly desirable place to live. Our newest park space is Phase Two of Magnolia Park, and we're anticipating it to be open in mid to late August. The city also completed work on Nasha Mesto, Corderos Park, and Lagoon Valley Archery Range and Dog Parks. Additionally, construction projects are underway that include Alamo Creek, Trower, Cerro Vista, and Centennial Bike Parks. I'll now turn it over to Elizabeth, who will highlight some of our department operations that lead to a lot of these endeavors.
Thank you, Bruce. Our three main community centers listed here primarily support department-offered programs and accommodate external rentals. Three Oaks, pictured at the bottom and set up for an event, quite lovely I might add, was built in 1973 and retains all of its original aesthetics. As charming as it is, we are continually challenged with modernizing its infrastructure to support current needs. One project in the works is an aesthetic upgrade to the kitchen. The current layout, appliances, and storage are outdated and not desirable for rentals. U-Lattice, the largest rental space we have, boasted 372 rentals for this fiscal year with just over 33,000 people coming through the doors. That is about one-third of Vacaville's existing population. Also pictured here are the water slides at Graham Aquatic Center, and while these evoke a sense of fun and excitement, what we want to emphasize is that the pool also offers essential services. Each year, hundreds of children are learning how to swim, which is an indispensable life skill. In addition, we are offering
Thank you, Bruce. Our three main community centers listed here primarily support department-offered programs and accommodate external rentals. Three Oaks, pictured at the bottom and set up for an event, quite lovely I might add, was built in 1973 and retains all of its original aesthetics. As charming as it is, we are continually challenged with modernizing its infrastructure to support current needs. One project in the works is an aesthetic upgrade to the kitchen. The current layout, appliances, and storage are outdated and not desirable for rentals. U-Lattice, the largest rental space we have, boasted 372 rentals for this fiscal year with just over 33,000 people coming through the doors. That is about one-third of Vacaville's existing population. Also pictured here are the water slides at Graham Aquatic Center, and while these evoke a sense of fun and excitement, what we want to emphasize is that the pool also offers essential services. Each year, hundreds of children are learning how to swim, which is an indispensable life skill. In addition, we are offering
Thank you, Bruce. Our three main community centers listed here primarily support department-offered programs and accommodate external rentals. Three Oaks, pictured at the bottom and set up for an event, quite lovely I might add, was built in 1973 and retains all of its original aesthetics. As charming as it is, we are continually challenged with modernizing its infrastructure to support current needs. One project in the works is an aesthetic upgrade to the kitchen. The current layout, appliances, and storage are outdated and not desirable for rentals. U-Lattice, the largest rental space we have, boasted 372 rentals for this fiscal year with just over 33,000 people coming through the doors. That is about one-third of Vacaville's existing population. Also pictured here are the water slides at Graham Aquatic Center, and while these evoke a sense of fun and excitement, what we want to emphasize is that the pool also offers essential services. Each year, hundreds of children are learning how to swim, which is an indispensable life skill. In addition, we are offering
Thank you, Bruce. Our three main community centers listed here primarily support department-offered programs and accommodate external rentals. Three Oaks, pictured at the bottom and set up for an event, quite lovely I might add, was built in 1973 and retains all of its original aesthetics. As charming as it is, we are continually challenged with modernizing its infrastructure to support current needs. One project in the works is an aesthetic upgrade to the kitchen. The current layout, appliances, and storage are outdated and not desirable for rentals. U-Lattice, the largest rental space we have, boasted 372 rentals for this fiscal year with just over 33,000 people coming through the doors. That is about one-third of Vacaville's existing population. Also pictured here are the water slides at Graham Aquatic Center, and while these evoke a sense of fun and excitement, what we want to emphasize is that the pool also offers essential services. Each year, hundreds of children are learning how to swim, which is an indispensable life skill. In addition, we are offering
Thank you, Bruce. Our three main community centers listed here primarily support department-offered programs and accommodate external rentals. Three Oaks, pictured at the bottom and set up for an event, quite lovely I might add, was built in 1973 and retains all of its original aesthetics. As charming as it is, we are continually challenged with modernizing its infrastructure to support current needs. One project in the works is an aesthetic upgrade to the kitchen. The current layout, appliances, and storage are outdated and not desirable for rentals. U-Lattice, the largest rental space we have, boasted 372 rentals for this fiscal year with just over 33,000 people coming through the doors. That is about one-third of Vacaville's existing population. Also pictured here are the water slides at Graham Aquatic Center, and while these evoke a sense of fun and excitement, what we want to emphasize is that the pool also offers essential services. Each year, hundreds of children are learning how to swim, which is an indispensable life skill. In addition, we are offering
Thank you, Bruce. Our three main community centers listed here primarily support department-offered programs and accommodate external rentals. Three Oaks, pictured at the bottom and set up for an event, quite lovely I might add, was built in 1973 and retains all of its original aesthetics. As charming as it is, we are continually challenged with modernizing its infrastructure to support current needs. One project in the works is an aesthetic upgrade to the kitchen. The current layout, appliances, and storage are outdated and not desirable for rentals. U-Lattice, the largest rental space we have, boasted 372 rentals for this fiscal year with just over 33,000 people coming through the doors. That is about one-third of Vacaville's existing population. Also pictured here are the water slides at Graham Aquatic Center, and while these evoke a sense of fun and excitement, what we want to emphasize is that the pool also offers essential services. Each year, hundreds of children are learning how to swim, which is an indispensable life skill. In addition, we are offering
Thank you, Bruce. Our three main community centers listed here primarily support department-offered programs and accommodate external rentals. Three Oaks, pictured at the bottom and set up for an event, quite lovely I might add, was built in 1973 and retains all of its original aesthetics. As charming as it is, we are continually challenged with modernizing its infrastructure to support current needs. One project in the works is an aesthetic upgrade to the kitchen. The current layout, appliances, and storage are outdated and not desirable for rentals. U-Lattice, the largest rental space we have, boasted 372 rentals for this fiscal year with just over 33,000 people coming through the doors. That is about one-third of Vacaville's existing population. Also pictured here are the water slides at Graham Aquatic Center, and while these evoke a sense of fun and excitement, what we want to emphasize is that the pool also offers essential services. Each year, hundreds of children are learning how to swim, which is an indispensable life skill. In addition, we are offering
Thank you, Bruce. Our three main community centers listed here primarily support department-offered programs and accommodate external rentals. Three Oaks, pictured at the bottom and set up for an event, quite lovely I might add, was built in 1973 and retains all of its original aesthetics. As charming as it is, we are continually challenged with modernizing its infrastructure to support current needs. One project in the works is an aesthetic upgrade to the kitchen. The current layout, appliances, and storage are outdated and not desirable for rentals. U-Lattice, the largest rental space we have, boasted 372 rentals for this fiscal year with just over 33,000 people coming through the doors. That is about one-third of Vacaville's existing population. Also pictured here are the water slides at Graham Aquatic Center, and while these evoke a sense of fun and excitement, what we want to emphasize is that the pool also offers essential services. Each year, hundreds of children are learning how to swim, which is an indispensable life skill. In addition, we are offering
Thank you, Bruce. Our three main community centers listed here primarily support department-offered programs and accommodate external rentals. Three Oaks, pictured at the bottom and set up for an event, quite lovely I might add, was built in 1973 and retains all of its original aesthetics. As charming as it is, we are continually challenged with modernizing its infrastructure to support current needs. One project in the works is an aesthetic upgrade to the kitchen. The current layout, appliances, and storage are outdated and not desirable for rentals. U-Lattice, the largest rental space we have, boasted 372 rentals for this fiscal year with just over 33,000 people coming through the doors. That is about one-third of Vacaville's existing population. Also pictured here are the water slides at Graham Aquatic Center, and while these evoke a sense of fun and excitement, what we want to emphasize is that the pool also offers essential services. Each year, hundreds of children are learning how to swim, which is an indispensable life skill. In addition, we are offering
Thank you, Bruce. Our three main community centers listed here primarily support department-offered programs and accommodate external rentals. Three Oaks, pictured at the bottom and set up for an event, quite lovely I might add, was built in 1973 and retains all of its original aesthetics. As charming as it is, we are continually challenged with modernizing its infrastructure to support current needs. One project in the works is an aesthetic upgrade to the kitchen. The current layout, appliances, and storage are outdated and not desirable for rentals. U-Lattice, the largest rental space we have, boasted 372 rentals for this fiscal year with just over 33,000 people coming through the doors. That is about one-third of Vacaville's existing population. Also pictured here are the water slides at Graham Aquatic Center, and while these evoke a sense of fun and excitement, what we want to emphasize is that the pool also offers essential services. Each year, hundreds of children are learning how to swim, which is an indispensable life skill. In addition, we are offering
Thank you, Bruce. Our three main community centers listed here primarily support department-offered programs and accommodate external rentals. Three Oaks, pictured at the bottom and set up for an event, quite lovely I might add, was built in 1973 and retains all of its original aesthetics. As charming as it is, we are continually challenged with modernizing its infrastructure to support current needs. One project in the works is an aesthetic upgrade to the kitchen. The current layout, appliances, and storage are outdated and not desirable for rentals.
Thank you, Bruce. Our three main community centers listed here primarily support department-offered programs and accommodate external rentals. Three Oaks, pictured at the bottom and set up for an event, quite lovely I might add, was built in 1973 and retains all of its original aesthetics. As charming as it is, we are continually challenged with modernizing its infrastructure to support current needs. One project in the works is an aesthetic upgrade to the kitchen. The current layout, appliances, and storage are outdated and not desirable for rentals. U-Lattice, the largest rental space we have, boasted 372 rentals for this fiscal year with just over 33,000 people coming through the doors. That is about one-third of Vacaville's existing population. Also pictured here are the water slides at Graham Aquatic Center, and while these evoke a sense of fun and excitement, what we want to emphasize is that the pool also offers essential services. Each year, hundreds of children are learning how to swim, which is an indispensable life skill. In addition, we are offering
Thank you, Bruce. Our three main community centers listed here primarily support department-offered programs and accommodate external rentals. Three Oaks, pictured at the bottom and set up for an event, quite lovely I might add, was built in 1973 and retains all of its original aesthetics. As charming as it is, we are continually challenged with modernizing its infrastructure to support current needs. One project in the works is an aesthetic upgrade to the kitchen. The current layout, appliances, and storage are outdated and not desirable for rentals. U-Lattice, the largest rental space we have, boasted 372 rentals for this fiscal year with just over 33,000 people coming through the doors. That is about one-third of Vacaville's existing population. Also pictured here are the water slides at Graham Aquatic Center, and while these evoke a sense of fun and excitement, what we want to emphasize is that the pool also offers essential services. Each year, hundreds of children are learning how to swim, which is an indispensable life skill. In addition, we are offering
Thank you, Bruce. Our three main community centers listed here primarily support department-offered programs and accommodate external rentals. Three Oaks, pictured at the bottom and set up for an event, quite lovely I might add, was built in 1973 and retains all of its original aesthetics. As charming as it is, we are continually challenged with modernizing its infrastructure to support current needs. One project in the works is an aesthetic upgrade to the kitchen. The current layout, appliances, and storage are outdated and not desirable for rentals. U-Lattice, the largest rental space we have, boasted 372 rentals for this fiscal year with just over 33,000 people coming through the doors. That is about one-third of Vacaville's existing population. Also pictured here are the water slides at Graham Aquatic Center, and while these evoke a sense of fun and excitement, what we want to emphasize is that the pool also offers essential services. Each year, hundreds of children are learning how to swim, which is an indispensable life skill. In addition, we are offering
Thank you, Bruce. Our three main community centers listed here primarily support department-offered programs and accommodate external rentals. Three Oaks, pictured at the bottom and set up for an event, quite lovely I might add, was built in 1973 and retains all of its original aesthetics. As charming as it is, we are continually challenged with modernizing its infrastructure to support current needs. One project in the works is an aesthetic upgrade to the kitchen. The current layout, appliances, and storage are outdated and not desirable for rentals. U-Lattice, the largest rental space we have, boasted 372 rentals for this fiscal year with just over 33,000 people coming through the doors. That is about one-third of Vacaville's existing population. Also pictured here are the water slides at Graham Aquatic Center, and while these evoke a sense of fun and excitement, what we want to emphasize is that the pool also offers essential services. Each year, hundreds of children are learning how to swim, which is an indispensable life skill. In addition, we are offering
Thank you, Bruce. Our three main community centers listed here primarily support department-offered programs and accommodate external rentals. Three Oaks, pictured at the bottom and set up for an event, quite lovely I might add, was built in 1973 and retains all of its original aesthetics. As charming as it is, we are continually challenged with modernizing its infrastructure to support current needs. One project in the works is an aesthetic upgrade to the kitchen. The current layout, appliances, and storage are outdated and not desirable for rentals. U-Lattice, the largest rental space we have, boasted 372 rentals for this fiscal year with just over 33,000 people coming through the doors. That is about one-third of Vacaville's existing population. Also pictured here are the water slides at Graham Aquatic Center, and while these evoke a sense of fun and excitement, what we want to emphasize is that the pool also offers essential services. Each year, hundreds of children are learning how to swim, which is an indispensable life skill. In addition, we are offering
Thank you, Bruce. Our three main community centers listed here primarily support department-offered programs and accommodate external rentals. Three Oaks, pictured at the bottom and set up for an event, quite lovely I might add, was built in 1973 and retains all of its original aesthetics. As charming as it is, we are continually challenged with modernizing its infrastructure to support current needs. One project in the works is an aesthetic upgrade to the kitchen. The current layout, appliances, and storage are outdated and not desirable for rentals. U-Lattice, the largest rental space we have, boasted 372 rentals for this fiscal year with just over 33,000 people coming through the doors. That is about one-third of Vacaville's existing population. Also pictured here are the water slides at Graham Aquatic Center, and while these evoke a sense of fun and excitement, what we want to emphasize is that the pool also offers essential services. Each year, hundreds of children are learning how to swim, which is an indispensable life skill. In addition, we are offering
Thank you, Bruce. Our three main community centers listed here primarily support department-offered programs and accommodate external rentals. Three Oaks, pictured at the bottom and set up for an event, quite lovely I might add, was built in 1973 and retains all of its original aesthetics. As charming as it is, we are continually challenged with modernizing its infrastructure to support current needs. One project in the works is an aesthetic upgrade to the kitchen. The current layout, appliances, and storage are outdated and not desirable for rentals. U-Lattice, the largest rental space we have, boasted 372 rentals for this fiscal year with just over 33,000 people coming through the doors. That is about one-third of Vacaville's existing population. Also pictured here are the water slides at Graham Aquatic Center, and while these evoke a sense of fun and excitement, what we want to emphasize is that the pool also offers essential services. Each year, hundreds of children are learning how to swim, which is an indispensable life skill. In addition, we are offering
Thank you, Bruce. Our three main community centers listed here primarily support department-offered programs and accommodate external rentals. Three Oaks, pictured at the bottom and set up for an event, quite lovely I might add, was built in 1973 and retains all of its original aesthetics. As charming as it is, we are continually challenged with modernizing its infrastructure to support current needs. One project in the works is an aesthetic upgrade to the kitchen. The current layout, appliances, and storage are outdated and not desirable for rentals. U-Lattice, the largest rental space we have, boasted 372 rentals for this fiscal year with just over 33,000 people coming through the doors. That is about one-third of Vacaville's existing population. Also pictured here are the water slides at Graham Aquatic Center, and while these evoke a sense of fun and excitement, what we want to emphasize is that the pool also offers essential services. Each year, hundreds of children are learning how to swim, which is an indispensable life skill. In addition, we are offering
Thank you, Bruce. Our three main community centers listed here primarily support department-offered programs and accommodate external rentals. Three Oaks, pictured at the bottom and set up for an event, quite lovely I might add, was built in 1973 and retains all of its original aesthetics. As charming as it is, we are continually challenged with modernizing its infrastructure to support current needs. One project in the works is an aesthetic upgrade to the kitchen. The current layout, appliances, and storage are outdated and not desirable for rentals. U-Lattice, the largest rental space we have, boasted 372 rentals for this fiscal year with just over 33,000 people coming through the doors. That is about one-third of Vacaville's existing population. Also pictured here are the water slides at Graham Aquatic Center, and while these evoke a sense of fun and excitement, what we want to emphasize is that the pool also offers In addition, we are offering swim lessons for adults as well. Most recently, we had several participants who shared they experienced a traumatic event in their childhood that caused them to be afraid of the water. Their courage in participating in our program has afforded them the ability to now enjoy the water with their children and their grandchildren with confidence and not paralyzing fear. We also teach CPR, first aid, and lifeguard skills that train individuals, lifesaving techniques necessary to work both in and out of the water. Many of the staff we employ get into aquatics as an introduction to the medical field of nursing, being a physician, or an EMT. So one of the things I want to circle back to with these numbers here on the slide is just imagine the foot traffic these facilities will get when the population expands by another 20,000 to 30,000 in the next 10 to 20 years. In an effort to keep up with this anticipated growth in our community, the department continues to build, create, and upgrade parks and facilities. Additional facility improvements that have occurred to promote safety and security are the replacement and upgrades of security cameras at both Three Oaks and the Graham Aquatic Center, which we hope to eventually do at all of the community centers. And on the horizon for this year is the installation of bulletproof glass at the Georgie Duke Sports Center front counter. That is to streamline it with all of our other public buildings that already have it. We also plan to purchase and install upgraded AV equipment at U-Lattice Community Center, which will enhance the quality of city-sponsored events, meetings, as well as external facility rentals. The much-anticipated Centennial Bike Park is now receiving literal loads of dirt through the innovative contract with Landify, a project that has already saved the city quite a bit of money in its early stages. This past year, Vacaville Performing Arts Theater invested in a new and improved stage floor that is more durable than the last. It will now no longer require theater staff to block out potential rental dates for annual maintenance and painting. Here we have listed some of our innovations and successes for the last year. Program registration came in at almost 28,000, which is an 8.6% increase from the previous year, and our participant wait lists were at 4,300, which is over 55% increase from previous year. This number really underlines how our existing inventory of facilities and programming spaces hardly supports the existing population, let alone what's to come. Many of the programs and activities we offer are for at-risk populations. Active Aging, Adaptive Recreation, Teens, Community Special Events all offer programs and membership models that are free or low cost in an effort to ensure the community has equitable access. This year, we received a digital literacy grant that is allowing us to offer free technology classes at McBride, as well as have the seniors receive a free device upon completion of the program. Seniors are learning modern technology designed to keep them connected to loved ones and friends to combat the social isolation this demographic often experiences. Staff are also partnering with Solano County Office of Education to offer life skills courses to both the teens and adaptive recreation populations. Participants are learning how to create resumes. They are learning how to balance a modern-day checkbook, and they are also learning how to practice cybersecurity, safety, and much more. We continue to offer scholarships for qualifying families so they can take part in our programs and essential services. This year, we awarded 257 scholarships, which equates to the total of $150,000. The full amount of the scholarships was given out. And we so appreciate that city administration and council see the value in this continuing to offer this resource as we move into the next fiscal year. We know council and many of the folks at home are aware of the wide range of events we do. Two of our proudest accomplishments are the continued execution of Merrymint on Main, our largest community event, Vacacon, which we won the Award of Excellence for from California Parks and Recreation Society. Both events bring out close to 10,000 attendees because they create a safe and fun environment for attendees to gather and celebrate. As our department dives deeper into the public art movement, we have gained even more momentum this year with the collaboration and installation of the labyrinthine heart downtown, which was donated by Genentech, as well as Visit Vacaville's Cows on Parade. The Vacaville Arts and Culture Master Plan has received high praise from those who've reviewed it. We look forward to your input as well as we anticipate the start of future projects outlined in this plan, such as utility box art and activating some of our more public spaces and seeking out collaborations with local businesses and the school district. In our line of work, our motto is creating community, so the more interaction and participation we have, the better. There are numerous ways that folks at home can support Parks and Recreation, participating in our offerings, volunteering at an event, coaching a sports team, interacting with us on social media. People can share their photos and tag us and obviously give us feedback on their experiences so that we can continue on our growth and improvement. Our department email is here, so jot it down or snap a pic if you're at home. It is important for us to know what the community wants, and you can advocate for what you'd like to see by watching or participating in public meetings like the Parks and Recreation Commission or here at City Council. You can always help by simply spreading the word about what we do. For 40 years, the United States has celebrated Parks and Recreation Month in July to recognize the meaningful and lasting impact this field has on the vitality of community and economic benefit. July 18th is specifically devoted to the people behind the work. Nationwide, there are more than 160,000 full-time park and recreation and hundreds of, excuse me, park recreation professionals and hundreds of thousands of part-time and seasonal workers and volunteers who maintain our counties, local, state, and community parks. And as a reminder, here in our own department, we have just 26 full-time staff and approximately 200 part-time staff. And how can you celebrate with us? Attend activity or an event. Visit one of the many parks, recreation areas, or facilities we have to offer in Vacaville, not just in July, but throughout the year. Our programs and services help cultivate lifelong friendships, memories, and family bond. In a nutshell, Parks and Recreation is for everyone. We are here for you. And that concludes our presentation, so thank you very much for this opportunity to present to you.
Thank you to both of you, and really, we do appreciate you joining the City of Vacaville and bringing all your experience. But as you know, you joined a team, and I don't know of any other department that has as much of the part-time staff trying to manage all the activities. And there's something in it for everyone, and so an appreciation and recognition for what the Parks and Rec do for our city. It's also a lot easier that it's no longer community services like it was years ago. What's that? It's Parks and Rec. So it is, it's my honor to read this proclamation, whereas California is fortunate to have a variety of park systems that provide countless recreational opportunities for residents and visitors alike. And where parks help to preserve and protect the natural and cultural resources of California and offer pleasant surroundings for leisure activities, relaxation, and recreation. And safe parks and recreation programs help prevent social programs, offer positive alternatives for youth, contribute to good health, enhance the desirability of locations for new business and families, stimulate tourism revenues, and generally provide an overall improved quality of life. And whereas thousands of Vacaville children, adults, and seniors benefit from the wide range of services, facilities, and programs provided by the Vacaville Parks and Recreation Department. And the City of Vacaville recognizes and honors the vital contributions that the Vacaville Community Services Commission employees and volunteers make each and every day to ensure that Vacaville's parks and recreation programs and facilities are well-maintained and are a refuge residents can relax, connect with family and friends, and reduce stress in their daily lives. So now therefore be resolved that I, John Carley, Mayor of the City of Vacaville, and on behalf of the Vacaville City Council, do hereby proclaim July 2025 Parks and Recreation Month in the City of Vacaville and urge residents to enjoy and recognize the social, physical, mental, and economic, environmental, and community benefits derived from our parks and recreation facilities. So thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
I think the only ask is probably when we're doing park renovations, if there ever was a way to do it in the wintertime, right? Because summer rolls around and we're rehabbing two of our parks, and we have heard a lot back, but I'm hopeful that when the construction's done, our residents will even further appreciate the long-awaited improvements that'll be coming, and that will be a benefit for our whole community. So thank you. All right, now we'll go ahead and move on to the consent calendar. There's items A through I. Any member of the council or the public wishing to pull an item? Seeing that, I'll go ahead and ask for a motion.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to business from the floor. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council on any item that's not on tonight's agenda that's within our jurisdiction. And please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor Carley. Extend my appreciation for your very professional and skillful leadership. I know it kind of sounds like I'm blowing smoke here, but you've proven yourself a very worthy mayor. Very much appreciate it, and also that of Councilman Stockton and Fremell. Many of us that talk, it's not lost upon us that the staff's been hundreds of hours addressing issues, and of course, the council tends to hundreds of hours on issues, and then we come up from the gallery and you very patiently listen to our comments, which don't have the benefit of the depth that you've put into each subject, and appreciate your patience very much, and I encourage the city to continue the way you're leading it right now. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Yeah, echoing the previous speaker, I too would like to thank members of the council for the amount of time that you spend with a lot of these issues that, like I say, we come up and talk about them and haven't necessarily seen as much as you have. However, let's go to another subject. I know that it hasn't been in the news a lot recently, but something that affects Vacaville very much is California Forever, whether we like it or not. California Forever is like that rat that's hiding out in your house. It's watching us at all times. Back in July of last year, the county staff did a study that showed what the damage California would have to the economics of Solano County and to the cities of the county. California Forever never disputed that study. Instead, they pulled their initiative from the ballot immediately after it came out, and they went down to ground for a while. The, in recent months, California Forever began to claim out of the blue that they were going to build a shipyard in Collinsville, and it was commented many times how California Forever seems to change whatever they intended to do. First, they were going to be the high-tech city with high-tech industry, and then they were going to be a goon with swimming, even though we've got all kinds of water problems, and now they're going to be a shipyard. Well, I know a little bit about shipyards. Nothing could be further from the truth. Going to the, once again, the county study about the viability of a shipyard in Collinsville, it would cost extreme amounts of money, take many years, and it just isn't going to happen. The Ships Act that everyone was talking about would only provide $250 million a year, and it's designed to stimulate existing shipbuilders or shipyards. It is not going to provide any sort of contracts that would in any way, shape, or form make it viable to build a shipyard out where there is nothing right now. If any Ships Act money comes to Solano County, it would end up going, we hope, to Mare Island because Maryland Dry Dock Company is in fact a shipyard newsflash. Anyone who says Solano County Shipyard, they mean Mare Island. There is nothing ever going to be at Collinsville. The, the thing with, with California Forever is that they are nothing more, in the words of former Senator Bill Dodd, nothing more than a real estate swindle. It's all it is.
Thank you.
They're going to say whatever they got to say. I would like to leave copies of this with the clerk. It's a synopsis of what the county staff said about what it would cost us.
Yeah, thank you. If you could just leave that with our staff. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Dylan Nielsen, 26 years old, been a resident my entire life here in Vacaville. I live over on Luzina, right around this corner, right here. So on May 5th, around 10:30 in the evening, my fiance and I were in bed getting ready to fall asleep and heard a huge crash. Heard people outside. I went out to investigate, and a huge, I wouldn't even call it a branch, it's the size of a tree, that came down nearly missing our home and took out our front fence along the way with it, narrowly struck two people and their dog. If this projectile was 45 degrees to the right, we would be in a whole different ballgame on where we're at right now. It was to the point where a neighbor around the corner had heard it from his backyard and came rushing around. Good news is Vacaville, great Public Works response the next day, came out, took care of it for us, let us know the steps to take for myself and for my landlord, Bob, right here. This tree has, you know, damaged a sidewalk. Public Works did a great job putting in some asphalt, fixing in some of the cracks. The sidewalk is even bowed. This tree is doing, you know, damage all over the place. Now, we're getting a response, calling it an act of God. We're almost two months post past this, and now it's being called an act of God, and now there's nothing they can do about it, or the city is doing for us, per se. After putting in the claims, taking the proper steps, being very patient, so this is why we're here today. I would love for all of you guys to put yourself in our shoes and just imagine, you know, if this was your home, or if it was your vehicle, and AAA or GEICO or someone looked at you in the face and told you it was an act of God, and then now you're stuck with the mess. We've been very patient, and I hope I'm not coming off, you know, in a very rude manner. I just want to bring it to light as to what's happening now. Again, we've been very patient. There's jagged edges left over. We're trying not, you know, touch the crime scene, leaving it for everybody, that way they can see, you know, if we move something, we don't want to be, you know, at fault for anything, but we've been very patient, and I hope maybe something we can take away from this is, you know, what can we do to help? Because being called an act of God right now is, I wouldn't call it ridiculous, but it's, you know, feels like a slap in the face for myself and my landlord with, we felt like we've been very patient, very kind, you know, not willing, you know, come pounding on the door, but now we kind of feel like we need to bring it to light for you guys to hear and see. That's all the time I have.
That's fine. Just, are you saying that's, the tree is the city's tree, or?
It was told to us that it was the city's tree. It goes street, dirt, tree, then sidewalk, then home.
If you wouldn't mind, if you could leave your contact information so that one of us will be able to follow up with you.
Absolutely. I've got plenty of photos and stuff as well to pass along.
That would be great, if you could do that.
Awesome. Appreciate the time. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody.
Hold on one second, sir. What, are you just going to speak on the same issue?
I'm going to talk about the claim and the safety matter of that tree.
Okay, if, are you repeating what the gentleman just said? Okay, come forward, and then I'll, I'm going to get the gentleman who's waiting in the back.
I have a property on 119 Luzina. Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor, City Council for hearing us tonight, and I liked seeing everything you had there on the parking racks. But I've been a resident a long time in Vacaville, 40 years, and we have this property over on Luzina. My wife really likes that property, and we fell in love with it and bought it, maybe a little more than what we should have paid, but my son lived there for years, and he's a member of the police force. he's a member of the police force here in Vacaville. And my daughter and son, my other daughter lives here also. But that day, they sent me down to do the claim. I filed the claim. And they sent me that this adjuster was going to come out and meet with me. But I got a phone call from her and she told me to go out and get some estimates for repair. And, you know, this project in itself. And I tried some fence people. It's kind of ornamental fence and they really didn't want to do anything with it. And I got sick for about a week. And then, we had, she called back and said, they denied my claim. I didn't even get any estimates into her. And I'd like to open this back up to try to resolve this issue. It is a city tree. There's a safety issue there. When it starts throwing these widowmakers, it's very dangerous for cars, people, houses, everything. I think you should have your city arborists go out and check that tree out before real damage happens. Thank you very much for hearing this, but I'd like to hear from this claim adjuster that the city attorney had me notified. And I'd like to open this claim back up and make it more reasonable.
Do you have any?
It is a city tree.
Yes, sir. Can you have any information? Or I've just directed to our city attorney. We'll just follow up and look into this claim.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sir, thank you for waiting patiently.
My name is Keith Lamont. I am a resident in Vacaville. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor. It was a pleasure talking to you at Pride the other day. I just want to follow up and say, you know, liberty and justice for all. I'm very grateful for the, as a gay man and a resident of Vacaville, I'm very grateful for the decision that was You know, there's been a couple of sessions here where I've heard a lot of homophobia, transphobia, some bigotry, even reading the post for Pride on social media, a lot of hateful comments. And I'm grateful to say, you know, liberty and justice for all. The Pride Festival was an amazing day of queer parents celebrating with their children. Nobody was being indoctrinated. Children's genders weren't being reassigned. It was nothing but love, effectiveness, and purposeful advocacy. So, I just want to thank the city of Vacaville for valiant efforts in staying late that night to make this decision. And I'll continue to be a voice for vulnerable communities. And I'm grateful to be an advocate in the city of Vacaville. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, I'm going to go ahead and close business from the floor. And we will move on. Madam City Manager, I think we're going to step into our first public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, this first public hearing is a resolution approving the landscaping, landscape and lighting maintenance assessment districts for fiscal year 2025-26. We have Brian McLean, your Public Works Manager, and Public Works Director, getting along all the way tonight, and Jacob Allred, your Assistant Director of Public Works.
Thank you, George Anne. Yeah, I've had two jobs this morning, or this evening already. I like the parks director job though, so maybe we'll switch. Tonight's presentation will be conducted by my right hand in maintenance, Jacob Allred, Assistant Director of Maintenance. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. Director McLean explained tonight we are holding the public hearing for the annual landscape and lighting assessment district levy. So, the city levies and collects special assessments on an annual basis for neighborhood parks, street landscape areas, drainage and detention basins, open space, and street lighting. And these special assessments are necessary in order to maintain, operate, and service these particular improvements. All right. So, special assessments are established under the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972, which sets forth three steps that are necessary in order to levy assessments. The first step was completed on February 25th, where council approved a resolution directing the preparation of the annual engineer's report. Step two was completed on May 27th, when the council granted preliminary approval of the engineer's report and set the public hearing for the June 10th council meeting. That item was subsequently duly continued to tonight's meeting, and here we are. So, this year's engineer's report details 139 landscape and lighting districts. The Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972 sets a maximum allowable assessment annually of 3% increase. And with that said, the summary of the engineer's report is as follows. 98 district levies will be increased. Nine district levies will remain unchanged. 16 district levies will be decreased. And another 16 district levies will not be assessed because the improvements in those districts have not been completed or are not anticipated to be completed in this fiscal year. So, this item is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA. In fiscal year 25-26, the assessment total is approximately $5.17 million. The general fund subsidy total is approximately $2.1 million. And that's made up of two parts. The first part is a 10% neighborhood park district general citywide use contribution, which is approximately $488,000. And the second part is the district funding gap or the shortfall of approximately $1.6 million, which continues to be covered by the general fund. The strategic goals associated with this are Initiative 2B, to manage impacts from growth, and Initiative 4A, to ensure fiscal sustainability. And staff's recommendation is by simple motion to adopt the subject amended resolution. That completes my presentation. And Director Brian McLean and I are here to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stockton?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. How many square miles of the city are not covered by a lighting and landscaping district?
I couldn't tell you on the mileage, but I could, in terms of overall area, about 43% are covered under an LLMD. So, the balance of the 57% not being in an LLMD.
Okay. And that's what the $2 million is for, is to subsidize the 60% that don't have a lighting and landscaping district?
To provide the subsidy for the shortfall of the various districts within that 43%. And there's not all of them, not all the districts in particular are in shortfall. There's a handful, typically the older districts, which were formed at the very beginning in the 70s and early 80s. Those are the ones that are typically the ones that have the shortfall.
Okay. And they're still being, those areas are still being maintained, though, frequently and kept up?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
My only question really is, is long-term, the deficit of 2.1 million, there's going to have to be another solution. So, I'm sure we'll come back at a later time with, you know, how we address that. In the meantime, this meets the objective that we'll receive the report so that we can move forward.
Exactly, Mayor. I absolutely concur with you. Staff has been continuing to keep in touch with our consultant on this. As you know, back in 2023, we did start a citywide effort that did provide some information related to where potential Prop 2 team vote would go on a citywide LLMD. And that was not well-received by the public. So, it is something that the consultant has told us, that we should continue to monitor macroeconomic conditions and continue to evaluate for those various options along the way.
And for example, Almo, the Almo Park, that one is one that's subsidized?
It is.
And it's one that's heavily used by a lot of people around the city?
It is.
So, the local taxpayers that are part of that are meeting a need, but the majority of the city gets the benefit. And I think maybe this is the conversation we're going to have to have in the future. Yeah. I know that's a rhetorical answer, but Councilmember Stockton?
Yes. I was just wondering, how do you prioritize which areas are going to get service? Is it based upon who's contributing, or is it based upon need? Or how are you figuring that out?
So, we're not prioritizing in that manner. We are putting all the effort in across all of the various districts regardless. So, there is no, there is no set amount. What happens is the particular budget for a shortfall district goes in the ring and it becomes an issue on the budget line, which the Assistant Director here, Jacob Allred, has just gone through, becomes a shortfall item. And so, that's part of that $2 million, $2.1 million in the shortfall. No park is left out, setback or median is left out. We make sure that the, our park staff are putting everything into it and providing that highest level of service across all the districts.
And if, just due to the deficit spending, if this was an area that we were unable to supplement in the future, would that come back to council to make determinations on how that money is spent and what it goes toward? Or would staff make that decision?
Well, that would be a, that would be a city council decision, absolutely.
Thank you. Councilmember Fremell?
Yes, thank you. So, in my notes, I was reading and it says, it's important to note that many of the city's districts continue to face funding challenges. And then, I'm just going to cut. It says, over time, they've become fiscally imbalanced. And so, I was just wondering, if you could, if you could just take a guess at it, is that, is that as a result of city councils not acting on this in the past, being kicked down the road? Or is it just, you know, I mean, because we continue to take out of our general fund, correct, to subsidize this to this, this year $2 million? So, is it, is it a lack of councils taking, you know, responsibility and getting it caught up and figured out where it needs to actually be? Because the maximum allowable increase is 3% a year, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So?
That's a great question, and a primary question that we answered in that 2023 analysis. It really goes back, Cliff notes on this, is in 2015, the California Supreme Court came down with a San Juan Capistrano ruling related to water rates. There couldn't be a separation of one, one sector of payers being, or paying X, and another sector of rate payers paying Y for the same service. Everybody had to pay the same. And so, what happened when that ruling came down is the water rates, which the city was, the city, the city itself, so the parks, through the operating budgets of various parks, the city's rate went up because we were getting a better rate. And so, water costs went up. So, as the water cost went up and irrigation costs, each of the parks continued to decline, the district areas that have smaller number of homes, smaller number of medias. So, the district was smaller when it was originally set up. There's not many rate payers in those particular districts, those shortfall areas, that are able to be able to keep up with that 1972, money landscape assessment district, or with that 3%, when we might have to fight over time, over the last 40 years, inflation, inflation has overtaken that 3%, which has led to this. That's it. So, I would say, you know, this is a relative cost. It's just the economics of the, 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 of the,
citywide tax that would, say, take a Melrose or a community service district fee and then just kind of equal it out all over town. So Councilman Wiley pointed out, so my Melrose would go away, and then we'd spread it out to people that live on the tree streets or up North Orchard, where many of us moved because, A, we wanted an older neighborhood, we didn't want these extra fees being added The, I fell off my train, happens. The opposition to this, we have a general fund and I guess we, what I thought a general fund was, is apparently not what it is today. The definition has changed from de-nitative to a new connotative definition to mean, well, that's money that we don't use for anything in the city. We charge fees for everything in the city and therefore that general fund is there generally for something else. Maybe it's the walking around money that councilmen have for their districts, I don't know. But this shortfall, my impression, when I look at my property tax, is for city services. That's what it appeared, but if it isn't, then the citizens of town really need to know that the general fund is not for maintaining their city and their neighborhoods, that it's for some other thing that hasn't been defined. So when I hear that, well, we have to make up for a shortfall in lighting and landscape, I'm a little bit confused because we have the community service districts, we have the Melrose neighborhoods, those people bought their property, their house, with the understanding they'd be paying for lighting and landscape. That's what the whole thing is for. And let me caution you, this is going to be also addressed in a very bad bill called SB 5. I've read through that. So that meant I had to go back and read the Melrose, Fimsen Act, et cetera. I realize this, this state has gotten itself into a lot of difficulty with some frivolous spending, some ideological spendings, instead of focusing on the responsibilities what local government has. And let me also warn you about SB 5. Mr. Mayor, if you want to maintain local control, you better hope it doesn't pass because there's going to be another SB 330 where they say to the city, you don't have anything to say about this. So I'd like you to reconsider that very carefully. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and close the, the public comment of the public hearing. And I'm not sure if you can respond to that because part of, it may not be understood. What is an LLMD and how is it formed around a neighborhood that's designed to maintain the service beautification of a neighborhood?
Exactly. That's, that's a great summary, Mayor. Through the development process, when a neighborhood, new neighborhood comes in, part of that requirement that the city has is to either annex into an existing LLMD, a lighting and landscape maintenance district, or create a new LLMD. And we've had some of those come to council over the past few years as these new developments come in. The district is formed around the, those housing units at a particular neighborhood on a new district. And it particularly would have, for example, a neighborhood park. And so the neighborhood park and the lighting, so the landscape medians, all of those get wrapped into that lighting and landscape assessment district. An engineer's report created by a certified engineer in that field goes through a significantly complex calculation to understand what the costs are to maintain those particular facilities. We call them facilities, so parks, lighting, landscape, medians, and a fee is derived. Again, all consistent with that 1972 lighting and landscape assessment district. And that's, that's part of the attachment that is in your packet on this particular item. It's the engineer's report. So now you have a district formed, you have people who come in and buy the homes on their, on their tax bill from the county. They pay a levy now that's part of that, you know, representative of that district. Those funds are collectively pooled together into a, that particular XYZ district. Those funds then are utilized by Public Works Maintenance to perform the, the maintenance of, of the park, the lighting, the landscape, the contracting out, or our landscape contractor to perform, you know, weed abatement, or, excuse me, weeding, litter book up, that kind of thing, to maintain the, the particular district. And then that's the, every year we come through, we go through the process, the engineer goes through and, and updates the information based on budget changes, cost of inflation, et cetera. And that's why every year you get to consider this particular item that comes before you for each district. So each of the districts are paying into to maintain their particular areas. Again, the, just for clarity, the, the shortfall areas are the older area town. The, I don't, if, my opinion is that there, the foresight to look out many, many years, decades into the future, to see that you have a hockey stick kind of pattern in terms of CPI versus the cost of doing things, they just, they diverged. You're just not collecting enough at that 3%, at that top, that 3% every year to be able to stay ahead of the cost of labor, of materials, of water, et cetera. And so they start to diverge and you get this shortfall. The newer districts, they're well set. The engineers have, for many, many years now, they've, they have that foresight. So, and we're, again, we're not the only ones who have problems. City of Fairfield has, has also gone through tumultuous times related to their LLMDs. It's not, not a Vacaville thing in terms of those shortfall districts and the concerns around them.
If I heard you right, the, the increased cost of water gets rolled into that and we, those were factored in differently all those years ago.
Yes.
Right. Because we used to not have to pay the high price because it was our water and now we do.
Correct.
The state kind of did that to us as well.
Yes.
Got that. Councilmember Stockton?
Yes, thank you. For that last explanation, because more than one thing can be true at once, right? So people do go to buy a new house in a new area and the affordability is affected by fees like this, but they're making that decision. Totally understand. Just like if there are folks that want to avoid paying these costs, they look for homes in other areas. So thank you, but thank you for going into depth. Thank you for the analysis. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the subject amended resolution and request a roll call vote.
Second.
Second.
All right, so motion, and I think Richie seconded, I know you did as well. So roll call.
Councilmember Stockton?
Yes.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Yes.
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Councilmember Fremont?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chapman?
Yes.
Mayor Carley?
Yes. And hopefully in the future, we'll have a way to solve this because that, that is against the general fund and it was never intended, but we've been subsidizing it for years and it's just an increase to the point where it's, it's no longer a small amount, it's a large amount. So, thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on to the second public hearing, item B.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This next item is a continuation of the public hearing from May 13th to consider adoption of bi-monthly water and sewer rate adjustments proposed in accordance with California State Proposition 218 requirements. We have Justin Cole, your Director of Utilities, Larissa Morris, Management Analyst, and our consultant from Will Dan here to present the item.
Good evening again. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. We have a updated presentation and some options associated with that based on some of the feedback and, and questions that we got at the last meeting. So I'll have our project manager, utilities, Larissa Morris, kick this off for us.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Our goal tonight is to provide additional information and clarification on the proposed water and sewer rate study, or rate adjustments. We'll begin by reviewing some history and background of the water sewer funds. Current fiscal year expenses for the water fund were projected at 25.8 million. Ongoing operation and maintenance expenses make up 32% of this total, while capital improvement project transfers make up just 2%. Project funding was reduced by over 70% this fiscal year to manage costs and balance the budget, as full year 25 revenues were projected at 24.5 million, resulting in an anticipated deficit of 1.3 million. The water fund has previously experienced similar funding challenges, forcing the department to manage expenses by scaling back or delaying necessary infrastructure projects. Dilling funding of necessary projects has resulted in significant system replacement needs due to aging pipeline and other infrastructure. Each year that planned replacements are delayed reduces the reliability of the system, resulting in increased breaks and outages. This map illustrates pipeline replacement need showing water lines in the city by installation date, focusing on the oldest sections of the system, which require replacement most urgently and are most likely to require emergency repair. The red lines represent water lines installed prior to 1955 and the orange represents water lines installed between 1955 and 1975. These two segments total over 372,000 feet of pipe. Most of these older lines have a life expectancy of 70 to 105 years. And if we were to replace all of these lines today with eight inch lines that are currently required by, by city standards, it would cost approximately $170 million. This highlights the need for adequate planning and funding to address these replacements, which are crucial for system reliability. An additional benefit to replacing aging pipeline is the higher capacity required to meet current city standards increases flow for fire protection, which results in increased safety for the city. This slide shows historical and projected water cap improvement, or CIP, transfers with projected CIP needs. The black columns represent historical water CIP transfers. The blue column represents CIP transfers under the proposed scenario one, and the green represents CIP transfers under the proposed scenario two. The red trend line shows 1% of replacement costs for underground assets on a 100-year replacement schedule, assuming a 3% future inflation rate. The upper dash yellow trend line shows 2% of replacement costs for vertical assets on a 50-year replacement schedule, in addition to the replacement costs for the underground assets. As you can see on the left side of the graph, system maintenance had been deferred for over 10 years to balance the budget, and the 2% allocated for the current fiscal year transfers falls significantly short of the need. At a minimum, it's recommended to budget 1% of replacement costs per year. These targets were developed based on current dollars and retroactively calculated for prior years based on historical inflation. As shown, inflation during and after the pandemic accelerated costs, and most utilities deferred rate increases during these years because of the difficult time. The proposed rate options bring the utility to a more sustainable path, but it doesn't make up for previous deferments. This chart takes a closer look at the proposed water CIP transfers during the rate study period. Annual rehab or replacement projects are necessary for proper system maintenance and reliability. This trend line is a good minimum budget target for the department, as it represents 1% of replacement costs for existing underground assets based on the 100-year replacement schedule with a 3% future inflation rate. As mentioned, the upper line represents projections if the department were to target budgeting replacements of vertical assets on a 50-year replacement cycle in addition to the underground assets. Because CIP transfers are not projected to reach this level, we could expect that this gap creates the need to seek financing for future pump station, treatment plant, and tank replacement expenses. My apologies. Targeting CIP transfers, oh my goodness. I need to go back one, sorry. Targeting CIP transfers between these two projected trend lines allows the department to be able to replace underground assets on a regular basis and be able to obtain financing in the future for facility rehab and replacements. While Chrome 6 funding is front, is scenario one, under scenario two, the city could still meet complaints, although it is less certain. So Chrome 6, although this is not the only factor, Chromium 6 clients contributes to the need for a significant initial increase, and there are potentially serious consequences that come with not having an improved compliance plan, such as reduction in the available water supply, state intervention, fines, risk of legal action that has the potential to be much more costly than the state action, and challenges obtaining financing and grant funding. Staff are actively working on exploring all available solutions, including treat options at well sites. One pilot study for ion exchange has already been completed, and we're preparing for an additional pilot for reduction, coagulation, filtration, and filtration treatment. Well exploration, of which the department is actively working with a consultant on modeling where we can expect to find Chrome 6 in the geologic formations, planning for the North Bay Regional Treatment Plant surface water expansion, new well construction that avoids Chrome 6, which is what we're planning to do with four new well sites, blending of different water sources, and non-potable or industrial water expansion to lower system, main system demand. This chart shows historical available supply and projected firm capacity. The dark blue represents surface water and the light blue represents well capacity. The yellow trend line here shows historical max date demands from the city and what is being projected by West Coast engineers based on the general plan. Like the number of service connections, demand is growing at approximately 2% per year. Looking back in history, available supply has decreased due to past deferred maintenance. Firm capacity needs to exceed projected demands. The risk of demand exceeding firm capacity is that we'd have a challenged water supply if maintenance issues do occur. The proposed rate scenarios front load Chrome 6-related projects and supply-related projects already underway. Replacement of supply and additional supply being added is shown on the graph in future years. Both O and M and development funds are used for replacement of and additional supply, which are needed to maintain a reliable water supply. Without adequate rate increases, the department will be unable to fund these projects and future supply will become uncertain. Moving into the sewer fund, current fiscal year expenses were projected at 39 million. Similar to the water fund, ongoing operation and maintenance expenses make up 31% of the total. However, capital improvement transfers combined with loan repayment for the previously completed tertiary project result in a more significant 20% of the expenses for this fund. Although a larger amount of funding is available for sewer projects, transfers remain relatively flat to manage expenses and maintain a positive fund balance. Sewer is in a better position as there have been more significant previous rate increases to fund major projects, such as the Easterly Plant Expansion and the tertiary project as required for regulatory compliance. The red trend line again is a target for 1% replacement costs of underground assets on a 100-year replacement schedule, assuming a 3% future inflation rate. And the yellow trend line is a target for 2% replacement costs for lift stations and the wastewater treatment plant based on a 50-year replacement schedule in addition to the underground assets. The projected CIP expenditures for sewer meets annual rehab and renewal for the sewer collection system, and the early increase in, increases in project funding are due to lift station rehabilitation. Because projections don't exceed the upper target, future years will require financing for the wastewater treatment plant and lift station replacements. That brings us to current actions taken on the rate study. So from mid 2022 through the end of 2024, the department worked with Will Dan on the current rate study and the proposed scenarios. This year, two scenarios were presented at, at the council meeting on February 25th, and staff received direction to proceed with the recommended scenario. The final rate study report was repaired, prepared based on this direction. We returned on March 11th to present the recommended scenario in detail. At this meeting, the report was accepted and the public hearing date was set for May 13th. Staff received approval to proceed with the noticing required by Prop 218. Notices were mailed on March 24th and community meetings were held in late April and early May. On, on May 13th, the public hearing was open, public comment was received, protest votes were received and counted by the city clerk, and it was determined that a majority protest vote did not exist. Council requested additional information and continued the public hearing to June 10th. And on June 10th, the public hearing was continued to this meeting, which brings us here today. I will turn it over to Chris Fisher from Will Dan to go into a little bit more detail on the analysis.
Thank you, Larissa. So Chris Fisher with Will Dan Financial Services here again this evening. And I'm going to go through and again, just kind of describe, summarize the process we've been through and some of the high points and some of the, the key outcomes of the analysis. So we, you know, the goal, the primary goal was to take a look at a lot of data gathered, a lot of data from the city related to budget, past historical data, expenses, fund balances, and projections of system, system needs, and develop a five-year plan. First, take a look at the current condition of the system and then develop a five-year plan to kind of ensure ongoing stability for both of the utilities. I wanted to make sure within that, we're providing funding for operations and maintenance and various capital projects. Larissa kind of went through some of that just a little bit earlier. We want to make sure that we're able to provide funding to repay outstanding loans and debt for each of the two utilities. The water debt will retire pretty quickly, I think, and next year is the final payment on the Siemens loan. And then the sewer utility has three SRF loans related to the tertiary project. Those will, that's pretty significant, as Larissa mentioned, that's about $7 million a year in repayment for that debt. We want to make sure that we're maintaining reserving as best we can, and we'll see in the analysis that we did make some trade-offs there to try and, and limit rate increases as best we could. And then ultimately recommend any rates, any rates that are recommended would have to be compliant with Prop 218, both in terms of being based on the cost of service as required under Proposition 218, and that we adhere to this process that we're in now of conducting a public hearing and mailing notices at that hearing and allowing for a protest process. So we, we developed a couple of scenarios, you know, as Larissa kind of summarized, and the previous slide summarized, you know, all of these factors, all of these costs that we wanted to cover. And really, the overriding factor is that rates had not increased in almost five years for water and even longer, almost 11 years, I think it was, for sewer. So we wanted to make sure that the areas could address all of these capital needs that, as Larissa mentioned, have kind of been backlogging a little bit, as well as to address the Chrome 6 project. So we developed two scenarios for evaluation. The first recommended scenario meets all of those needs, the deferred capital projects that have been on the books, as well as current projected capital needs, as well as the Chromium 6 projects in the earlier part of the projection period. The second scenario defers some of the necessary basic water cap projects and defers the Chromium 6 projects a bit, but still meets those and then provides, you know, capital or repayment of debt and operating and, operating and maintenance costs. The sewer fund was not changed in either of these two scenarios, it, it stayed put. So you see under scenario one there, the capital, total capital project list totaled about $96 million. Sewer was about $58 million. And you see in scenario two, the total capital project list totaled about $81 million for water, so there's about a $14 million reduction in the capital plan, and the sewer remained the same. So to kind of provide a little bit of historical context, here is where the city of Vacaville's rates reside currently. You see all the way over there on the left, the green bar representing Vacaville is the second lowest of all of the rates that we looked at for all of those cities that you see there, Davis, all the way up to Petaluma, Sonoma, Santa Rosa. And again, that's, you know, partially a factor of rates not having been increased in, in a while. in a while. And this does represent a bill for an average residential customer. This is a bimonthly amount, 2,400 cubic feet of water over a bimonthly billing period. And that $2,400 was arrived at by looking at actual city data and doing the analysis to figure out what an average residential customer uses in terms of their metered water use. The next couple of slides provide a little bit of history on financial performance. Larissa touched on this a bit as well. The past couple of years, both utilities have had to manage their costs on reduced revenue. And you see, so this is water. The blue bars represent the revenues and the red bars represent the expenses. So you see in 21, 22 fiscal years, things looked okay. The revenues were more than expenses, and so the black line representing the reserves as a percentage of expenses grew. And starting in year three, the trend flipped and expenses now are outpacing the revenues, and that continues, estimated to continue in fiscal year 24 and 25. And now you see that reserves as a percentage of expenses now declining to just 9% in the fifth year. So we'll go to, take a look at sewer, and you'll see pretty much the same trend. First two years, revenues were positive in terms of other, in terms of expenses, and the reserves were growing. And then in year three, the trend reversed, and now the expenses are outpacing revenues and the reserve balance is declining. So very similar picture, which, you know, as Larissa mentioned, requires, you know, some budgeting and some decisions are making on an annual basis to make sure that, you know, the revenues are used on a priority basis for the, for the, for the best uses. So let's take a look at scenario one. Again, as described on that briefly on the previous slide, it prioritizes the Chromium 6 treatment projects as well as the other capital system rehabilitation and replacement projects. This scenario will enhance the likelihood of compliance with the Chrome 6 mandates. If in fact, and you know, there's been discussion in the past couple of meetings, the city is looking at legal options in terms of challenging this change in the allowable levels of Chrome 6 and the requirement to do these projects. If, if that were successful, the city could reduce future rate increases. So if it could be adopted tonight, and then in, you know, year two, year three, if it was found that those projects weren't needed, then the city could, could choose not to implement those increases in those years. So that is discretion that the city could retain. The revenues do meet SRF loan agreement requirements. So for the outstanding debt, for the tertiary debt, as well as the Siemens loan, there's a requirement that the utility maintain a dollar and 20 cents of net results for every dollar of repayment of debt that needs to be made. So though this does ensure that those covenants are indeed complied with. And in fact, in the case of the water utility, it exceeds, or the sewer utility, by the third year, it will exceed 1.5x, which will enhance the creditworthiness for the city in the event that you decide to go out and pursue other low-interest funding opportunities. So that was a goal as well. So here's just a lot of numbers up here. There's kind of a few things just to really pay attention to. What this is, is a net result, net results over the five-year period, the existing plus the five-year projection period for both the water and sewer utility. The water utility is above the kind of gray line in the middle there. And the thing that really shows the operating results, starting in year three, 2028, start to trend upward, and you see the days cash on hand and the cash balance trending upward by that point. In the first couple of years, you see it gets pretty low. In year two, we're down to just over six days cash reserve on hand. So that's well below the targeted level of 180 days. And then year three, or 2027, year two, I should say, we start to pick back up. Year three picks up again, and then by, by the fifth year, we're at just about 180 days. So right at that target reserve level of 180 days. Sewer fund looks a lot better, kind of a different picture. We're actually spending down cash on hand, again, to mitigate any rate increases. You see the cash on hand starts at about 400 days, and we kind of, we let that drift down and spend that money on capital projects until we're just above 180 days in the fifth year. So again, we're just about at the target, just a little above. So that's what the, the net results would look like with the, the recommended scenario one. And this is a snapshot of the capital plan, and the, again, there's water, and then in the middle, there's wastewater, and then at the bottom is a sum of the two. And really, the top line in each of those sections is key because those are projects that we're paying for directly from revenues generated by rates or by cash that the utility has. Grant funding is different, doesn't affect the rates, and diffunding is from development impact fees and specified and has to be used in a restricted manner just for growth-related projects. So those are, they don't really affect rates either. So you see about $96 million in total capital for the water of that, just under 70 million of it, is funded from, from cash from rates. From the wastewater utility, a total of about 58 million in capital projects. Of that amount, 44 million is funded with cash from rates. So based on the scenario one, this is what the five-year path of rates looks like at three different levels of use. So we have the blue line in the middle being that same typical average residential customer using 2,400 cubic feet of water on a bimonthly basis. And then we have a low-use customer using 10 units of water, 10, 10 cubic feet, 100 cubic feet, and a high user using 40 units or 400 cubic feet of water. So the medium user bill goes from about 210 to just over 275 in the first year. And as we've talked about earlier, that's, that big jump is necessary to really try and start to make up that ground from, from years of no increases and the need to really fund these, this backlog of capital projects. So that's about a $65 jump in the first year, and then each year thereafter, it jumps up $15, then 14, and then 12 each of the last four years. And then you see for the low user, the gray line there, using 10 units, the increases are less significant. So it goes up from 174 to 209, still the biggest jump in the first year, and then goes up, you know, give or 10 dollars, give or take a dollar each year for the rest of the period. And then the high user, the 40 units of water per bimonthly period. Again, same pattern, the biggest jump in the first year, and those, those changes leveling off each of the four years after that. So we also took a look at what would that scenario one look like if you were to strip out the Chromium 6 related costs? And so the blue lines recommend the, the recommended scenario, that the scenario one got any change, and those are the, those same numbers, the rates that we just looked at on the previous slide, starting at 210 per bimonthly period, and then 275 in the first year, and then 290 all the way out to 328 in the fifth year. And so you see some reduction each year so that the, the rate at the end of the fifth year is about $8 less, and you see it's less, it is less in each of the, the years there, and you see the amount on the bottom. The difference is about $22 in terms of the increase in the first year, and then about $18 difference in the increase in the second year, and then the, the amount of that difference gets smaller each of the years out to the fifth year. So it does mitigate the, the increases, but again, that, then it eliminates also the Chrome 6 problems, which, or the Chrome 6 projects, which is, you know, another, another facet to talk about. So the second scenario that we developed was scenario two, which defers some of the capital projects and, and moves the Chrome 6 projects out a bit. So it does smooth the, as well here on, on some of these future slides, it does smooth out the rate increases over the five-year period, and it does prioritize completing those Chrome 6 projects during the production period, but just moves those back a bit. The trade-off is that the initial reduction in rates does increase risk in terms of cash on hand and the ability to address projects and have risk of cash in case of emergencies, and, you know, could result in a, you know, need to come back sometime within the five-year period and look at rates again. Then it also takes out some of the rehabilitation and repair projects beyond to reduce the initial costs. And again, anytime you're deferring capital projects or rehabilitation projects, there's some risk that you could have system degradation and potential failure, which would potentially reduce future reliability and the ability of the city to deliver the water service without interruption. So here's the, what the scenario two, the change in the capital plan, there's no change in wastewater. Again, that's in the middle of the wastewater capital plan, that's just a summary, the same dollar amounts, same total dollar amounts. You'll see at the top, water, now the total capital plan is 81 million, and that was 96 million before, and the, the cash funded portion of that is about 60 million. So a reduction of about $14 million in the capital improvement plan. So the, the impact to the results, you'll notice that, again, the same slide we looked at before, water at the top, and then below the gray solid line is sewer, which is unchanged. Again, no, no changes to sewer. So you see the net operating results again, increasing gradually through the five-year period, and the cash balance increasing but not at the same pace. So we, you recall, we ended the five-year period at about 180 days, it was 178 days worth of cash on hand. Under scenario two, we end that five-year period with about 112 days of cash on hand. So we lost about, about 60 days of cash in reserve by reducing the rates and reducing and changing the, the financial plan here. Here is another look at what the five-year path of rates looks like, similar to what we looked at before. We have the average user represented by the blue line, the high-use customer represented by the green, and the low-use with the gray, but these are the rates that would be recommended under the scenario two. So you see the increases are less in the early years than they were, and there'll be a comparison slide that shows this coming up. But so you, you might recall, the, the medium user, the average user went from 210 to about 275 under the previous scenario, and now it only goes to 250 on a bimonthly basis. But then the increases in the later years are a little bit more of the scenario than they were under scenario one because they're, they're smoothed out a little bit over the five-year period. So that, that reduced increase in year one is made up over the, the subsequent four years. So we end up the fifth year at $323. We were at $328 before. So we end up about $5 less on a bimonthly period as compared to scenario one. So let's take a look at the, the difference or kind of comparison between the two scenarios. So this is the slide that we looked at before, the comparison of Akeville to neighboring agencies. So the existing is still shown there, all the way to the second, last to the left there, $210. And you see scenario two, the first year is $250, and under scenario one, it's $275. So really, both in the same lane between Fairfield and West Sacramento, but, but it is $25 different, and still either scenario is well below the $357 average represented by that black line, which is the average of all the comparison agencies we looked at. The, this is a comparison between the two scenarios of the changes and kind of restates what I described a little bit earlier in, in graphic form. So you see under scenario one, that first year increase is, is about $24 more than scenario two. And then you see, starting in year two, the scenario two increases start to make up some of that ground. So as I indicated, by the, the end of the five-year period, it arrives at just about $5 less than the scenario one bimonthly bill amount. And this just breaks this now down into a monthly look. We've talked a lot about bimonthly because the city does bill on a bimonthly basis. So we thought it might be helpful, you know, from a monthly standpoint, the change in the first year under scenario one is about $32, under scenario two, it's about 20. And then you see each of the years after that, the amounts, the amount of the increase on a monthly basis as opposed to a bimonthly basis. Again, just to provide some, some visibility of what it might look like on a monthly rather than bimonthly basis. Go ahead, go ahead. Larissa was going to talk a little bit about just some, some comparisons in terms of the cost of water to some other sources of water.
To help illustrate value that customers are receiving, we wanted to create another cost comparison. So if you compare a single-use bottle of water, it's approximately $1.50 a bottle, which would equal about $5.50 per gallon. For a water delivery service, at the low end, you're looking at about $7 for a $5 gallon bottle of water, which is about $1.40 per gallon, but then you also have to consider any rental and delivery fees. If you were to utilize a water bottle refill station, you're looking at about 50 cents a gallon, which is a better value. And then for the city water delivered to your house, the current rates are a fraction of a cent per gallon. The one unit of water, so we're talking about 24 units of water for the average bimonthly customer, one unit of water is equal to 748 gallons of water. I'm, yes, one unit, 748 gallons of water. So for the proposed rates, we're looking at that increasing to a fraction of a cent to just over one cent. And this range includes the fixed cost for the meter charges as well as the consumption, and the range also displays the difference between the 5/8ths, 3/4ths, and 1-inch meter size. So taking all of that into consideration, the water that you're getting delivered to your house by the city is still this value out of all of these sources. So finally, we're here at the recommendations on alternatives. So for the staff recommendation, council, staff recommends that council adopts and implements the scenario one rate set out by Wildan in the water and wastewater rate study and as identified in the Prop 218 notice. An additional alternative is number two, where council can adopt scenario one rates from the water and wastewater rate study, but implement rates at the scenario two level. With this option, council would retain flexibility by adopting the maximum possible rates set out in the Prop 218 notice, but setting the effective rate at the lower deferred maintenance rates specified in scenario two. If council selects this alternative, staff's recommendation is to adopt at the scenario one rates, but implement the increase at the scenario two rates, rather than at a different rate that was not examined in the water and wastewater rate study because the rate charged to the resident should be based on data analysis performed by Wildan for legal sufficiency purposes. The third option is another alternative where council can adopt and implement the scenario two rates set out by Wildan in the water and wastewater rate study because the Prop 218 authorized adoption of rates up to the amount set up, set in the public hearing notice. Council is authorized to adopt and implement the new rate that is lower than what was specified in the original notice. We are happy to take any questions and comments.
That's a lot of information there. Well, I appreciate it because we, we've been through many discussions in the past. So, Councilmember Silva?
Yeah, no, thank you for a very thorough, data-driven presentation. One thing I didn't quite get out of that and, and other meetings was if we, if we elect to do a deferred maintenance option, when would that deferred maintenance be implemented? Would it be like year, towards the end of the five-year cycle, or would it be straight off from the beginning?
Now, thank you for the question. So the deferred maintenance would begin initially. So the funds come in, there is a priority project list that's set. They include reservoir rehab, well rehab, and pipeline rehab projects. So based on the amount of revenue we see, we can put the money towards those projects, and whatever we can't fund will be deferred to the following years.
Thank you. Councilmember Wiley?
Thank you for the information. Could you go to slide 27 or 21? They both have that chart about the percentages, and I wanted to look at that again because you kind of mentioned it, but we didn't say much about it because I'm really surprised at the percentages. So this is done on 24,000, 24 CCFs, but the, I wish it went from 10 to 23 because I wonder how many 24s are in that slide? Because it looks like 67% of the people would have a much low, a lower rate than even is shown here, like on this one shows the 174, whereas in all the other slides, you showed the 24. So, so 66% of the people will have less than what you showed on almost all the other slides. So in that 10 to 24 CCF, are most of them toward the low end or are they evenly distributed? So some are in the 24. Do you understand what I'm saying? Because 24 is in both of them, so, so is it true that 67% of the people will have the lowest gray line raised rather than the blue line?
So I, I think I follow the question. So yeah, the, the 24, it's, it's really above 24 in that third category, so it's really 24, above 24 to 40.
And so this rate, the, the blue line is really starting with the 24 to 40 then, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so a lot of the letters we got were people, I'm, you know, on a single low income, I have, don't have very much, I don't spend very much anyway. So a lot of the people who have concerns won't have as big of an increase as it looks if you're, if using the numbers that you just say. Here's what the average is, but the average is really for only 24% of the people, not 67% of the people.
That's correct. That's correct.
So I just wanted to point that out, because I'm really glad that you put that on there. All right, and then, secondly, I wanted to ask about how this is all related to pipe size? Because we didn't talk about this here. Do all the people pay this rate? Or do some of them pay more if they're in newer houses and they have to have bigger
So this graphic is an average. So it takes in kind of the, the generalization of what an average customer would pay. The actual bill that you would pay is dependent upon the meter size that you have at your house. We have 5/8ths, 3/4ths, and 1-inch meters. And there's a different rate charged for the level of service provided, depending on what meter you have at your residence or business.
And so you were saying the newer houses that are going in have to have a bigger than 5/8ths? Is that correct?
Yes, our newer standard meter is a 1-inch meter. And their 1-inch meters are required to meet the fire flow sprinkler installations that are required at newer homes.
All right. So basically, still, 66% of the people will have a lower rate than we have been talking about as the average rate.
Correct.
And some people will have a higher than that. And people who irrigate are going to be in that highest number. That's why I get on my water bill, you're in the highest user area, you want to do something about it. But we have grass and we irrigate, so that's where we are. Okay, my, I have one, just one more question. I really, it's, really appreciated the last slide that you showed this time, that talked about the cost of the water, if you buy a water bottle, have it delivered and/or. So thank you for including that. Because basically, the water is free, but you're paying for the delivery. And that's what we have to pay for the pipes and all the workers and the, all the CIP projects, because the actual cost of the water is just a miniscule part of what we pay. Correct?
That, that actual cost of the water covers everything. It covers the pipes, the treatment, the chemicals, salaries, benefits, electricity costs.
Right. So we're paying for the whole package, delivered to our home on demand.
For less than a penny a gallon.
Yes, yes. So thank you.
Councilmembers Stockton?
Yes, thank you.
For the presentation, I just want to confirm, slide 27 is actually the rates for scenario number two, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, can you go to the chart for scenario number one? Because it looked like those went up $20, $20, and then roughly 10, 10, 10 the following three years. This one is going to be different, yeah? And so the, the 67-point-whatever percent you're saying are going to be that gray line? Because there's four, there's four percentages with three lines. So the, essentially, the top two, 0 to 10 and 10 to 24, represented by that gray line?
The gray. Together.
Sorry, the gray and the blue together.
Okay, so the 0 to 10, this is, this is what I was trying to get toward. The 0 to 10 CCF is the gray line. Correct? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then the 10 to 24 is the blue line?
Well, the, the blue line is, the, the categories on the, they're, they're different. So the blue line is just 24. The, the categories up in that, that box is the full range.
So how many?
So you could say that blue line is represented by the first two categories, that the 0 to 10 and the 10 to 24.
So what is the 10 to 23? What percentage is that of the bimonthly years?
It's, it's, the, should, the labeling should be just, it's, it's the combination of the 30.97 and 36.59. The total, the total of those. And then the, the third category really should be above 24, from 24, from, you know, 24.001 up to 40, however you want to say that. So it's above 24, up to 40, if that makes sense. So 24 is not in both categories.
Correct.
Right.
So that?
That's just a labeling.
Got it.
Yeah.
So scenario number one is significantly higher than scenario number two?
It is particularly in the, in the first year, right.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and open to the public for, for comment on this hearing.
Mr. Mayor, Council. Couple things. One is a comment. My impression was that our rates were in good control, because we always had an outstanding utilities department. Again, not blowing smoke, just the way it was. I had a lot of operations with them when I was in the fire service investigator. And no, I think it was 2003 or 2004 that the city just finished the expansion of a brand-new wastewater treatment with a capacity to tear of future growth. And just about when they're ready to turn that switch on, the state of California said, "Oh, by the way, we just changed the standards." That's my segue into my next question, and brought it up before. It was brought up that the federal EPA has a standard for hexavalent chromium, and then the state of California has 1/10th, 1/10th of that value for hexavalent chromium. We had to get the number. About 10 years ago, the League of Cities sued DP, the Department of Water Resources, because they tried to stick this thing in. Before, they withdrew the standard, because they didn't have evidence for it. I went to their website. I have found no peer-reviewed studies as to where they came up with this standard of 1/10th of what the Fed EPA. Now, hexavalent chromium is not something you want to monkey with. But, as Pericles says, dose makes the poison. Chico, some years ago, kid died from drinking too much water in a fraternity dare. So it's the volume, the content, the amount that makes the difference. So I, I'm still not satisfied that we know what, what's the state doing? Where'd they get this number? They pull it out of the air like High End Tran did with the diesel particulate standard? He made it up? He lied? Another question is, if there was absolutely no growth, and I'm, I'm all for growth, but if there was absolutely no growth in the city of Akeville, would our current resources meet our current, would meet the current demand? So why are we expanding the system? If it's for growth, then those people that want to build here and expand here should be paying for that new infrastructure. We used to call it impact fees. Now, I don't think it's been segregated out. So do we need that? And who's paying for this expansion? And as far as, I, I really like preventive maintenance, and I've done apparatus replacement programs, et cetera. But if our service life was engineered for 100 years, I don't think we should be bothering to start replacing it at 50 years. There were two numbers put up there, just an opinion. If you could address those issues, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor, City Council members, and city staff. Leo Scarsica, White Sands Drive, commenting on the staff report supporting this agenda item. A question regarding the capital cost to improve five of the city water supply wells to comply with a state-mandated MCL for hexavalent chromium 6 of 10 parts per, per billion. In table five of this report, water CPI, only four wells are listed for chromium treatment, chromium 6 treatment. Well number nine, well number 14, number 15, and number 16. Perhaps I misread the table. So if I could have clarification on that, that would be great. If I recall correctly, the cost for regulatory compliance has, has been noted as $36.73 million. However, there is also an added expense to the city in the legal challenge against the updated maximum contaminant level. Those costs, to date, and future expenses, are unknown to the public. I am urging the city council to reconsider this legal challenge on the basis that the Akeville utility department's mission is to provide reliable, safe, and high-quality drinking water. Likewise, the state water resource control board mission is to ensure the highest reasonable quality for waters of the state. The water board relied on the state office of environmental health hazard assessment, which mission is to perform health risk assessment and develop public health goals for drinking water contaminants in California. The state of California became the first state to acknowledge a link between ingested hexavalent chromium and cancer in July 2014, establishing a maximum contaminant level for hexavalent chromium of 10 parts per billion. In closing, I offer a suggestion. City council members have expressed concern for those residents that will be impacted by the rate increase. City council, consider moving forward with a cannabis business model. A portion of the city tax revenue generated would then assist those in need. I thank you.
Good afternoon. Two quick counter-observations. The first being that, while it is wonderful how much cheaper city water is than bottled water, I have never taken a shower with bottled, I have never taken a shower with bottled water when I wasn't in the field. I also have never watered my lawn with bottled water. I would also like to point out that, on this list here, I, myself, I have three teenagers, well, two, one about to be a teenager. So I'm well above the green line. However, the city's most vulnerable population to this, for the most part, is going to be under that gray line, where they're on a fixed income, their usage is lower. So it's going to affect them in a different way than it's going to affect me. And I urge the city council to strongly take into consideration those people, as opposed to myself. I am in my 40s, I'm working, I can absorb a hit like this. A lot of the elderly population in this city cannot. So if you're going to consider how this is going to affect me and my family, I would ask you instead to consider how it's going to affect the elderly and retired. As I can take this hit, they cannot. So, thank you for your time.
Yeah, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. You know, I've been following this since May, maybe a little bit before May. And what jumps out at me is, the sewer rate increase hasn't been since 2014. And so the water department here seems to me, with the rate of expansion this city has grown since 2014, it's like, how come this has never been addressed? Where's the anticipation when we're seeing the growth rate of this area? We're located in the prime commute part of California, between the Bay Area and all. And so now, we're coming up with these water and sewer rates, and it's a nice chunk of change. So with that said, then the, this analysis started 22, 2022, and it's taken two years, 2022 to 2024. It just seems to me like the water department has let the, the residents down by not anticipating the growth and, basically, the state's requirements. That was first and foremost on my mind. And then the second item, I'm, I seen that we have this lawsuit pending, and there's multiple cities throughout the state that are fighting, I guess it's that requirement for whatever that element is in the water. When is that, is that in court right now? And do they have, or do they even have a court date for that? Because part of the presentation was that they would, the, whatever the outcome was on that court date, is that it could affect our rates. Our rates could be lowered. So does anyone know what's going on with that? When, where the process, that court date is in the process of all of this? That's all I have. Thanks, you guys.
Yeah, thank you. Let me go ahead and close the, the public comment portion of this hearing and bring it back. There are several items that you may be able to address, if possible. So, give it your best.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I took some brief notes here. So the EPA does have a total chromium of 100 parts per billion. The state of California has adopted a hexavalent chromium of 10 parts per billion as an MCL. So it is 1/10th, and it's specific to hexavalent chromium. That was enacted in October of last year, and we have two years to get in compliance with that. Several comments, questions related to growth. This is not related to, I guess, the monies that are going to collect it through this rate study go to the operating expenses and maintaining our existing facilities. The development impact fees that the gentleman mentioned are related to growth-inducing costs. So pipelines associated with new developments, the developers do pay their fair share through that development impact fee process. The service life of the, the lines after 50 years, I think the, the concept there is that we're not replacing all those lines this year. We put in less than $1 million into our reserve, or excuse me, our capital transfers this year. I think Larissa said it would be $170 million to replace those lines. So at that rate, we'd have 170 years to get those lines replaced that were built before 19, I think it was 75 on the slide. That's the adequacy that we see here, is that we need to start now on those lines that are over 100 years old. And we do have lines in the system that are over 100 years old. And start replacing those lines, so that the lines that are 50 years old today, that we can have that money 50 years from now to replace those lines when they come due. The one gentleman spoke to the wells, the, correct, we have just four wells that we're going to look to treat chromium 6 at. The fifth well is an older well, and the plan is to just mothball that facility. It doesn't seem like a worthwhile investment to put millions of dollars into an aging well that may not reap the benefits of several years of service after putting a bunch of brand-new chromium 6 treatment into it. The, the legal challenge, there was some costs and, I think I'll defer to Melinda. I know that it's later this year, but you may have some more specifics. I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Yes, no worries. So, so there is a case, it's filed in a federal court in Fresno County, and they're, we're anticipating a hearing sometime fall. That's, it hasn't been said yet, but that's the expectation.
And can we speak to the cost?
Oh, so, so at this point, the city hasn't contributed any funding. That could change later, but, but at this point, there, there's no cost to the city as far as dollars. Staff time, yes.
Great. Yeah, thank you. And I know that, as you speak to five additional wells, I think you're looking in the future. What's the expertise to make sure that we don't hit chrome 6?
So we hired Ludorf and Scalamini, certified geologists. They're the ones that produced the groundwater sustainability plan for the Solano Sub Basin, which we are part of. And taking all the information they have from all the wells within the counties, the cities, the irrigation districts, and doing an overlay of the different layers, it's not as simple as just going down and chromium, is it 100 feet to 200 feet, or it's deeper or it's shallower? It migrates in different areas, depending on where you're at in the county. Like Dixon, for whatever reason, has concentrations, we have concentrations. And then you go further east, and chrome 6 kind of dissipates. So they're working on a strategy to identify areas that have a high likelihood of not encountering chrome 6 when we drill. But they'll tell you, just as I'll tell you today, is the only way you know is putting a hole in the ground.
Councilmember Silverman?
Yeah, thank you. So I wasn't here when this last item, this item last came up. But I know one thing that came up. You know, some, someone mentioned about, you know, different, different alternative funding sources. You know, cannabis specifically, that's something that council decided wasn't a priority this particular year. The, and I don't think, we also don't have a cost-benefit analysis. So I think a lot of times, people in the community think that, oh, if we start selling cannabis, that that's going to be a cure-all for everything. We don't have any data to support that, one way or another. So the financial assistance program, can you elaborate a little bit more on that comment? I know that's come up in many conversations about those who may have some type of financial hardship affording utilities.
So we currently do have a low-income program. This is not necessarily geared towards seniors, and we cannot have other classes of customers subsidize a class of customers such as seniors, because it could be seen as discrimination. However, if they do meet the income requirements... However, if they do meet the income requirements based on the PG&E care program, then they can apply for this discount program. We currently, like, in the current fiscal year, in the past few fiscal years, we have funds set aside that are non-rate renew. And so these are things such as our cell tower leases that we can use towards that program. And generally, we have about $400,000 available in funding. The way we've determined the low-income discount, which is $8 a bi-monthly billing period, is taking the data that PG&E has provided based on everyone that is eligible for that program through PG&E and dividing that by the amount of available funding. So it is currently not being utilized to capacity. That is something that we could potentially take a look at. But we run the risk of running out of funding or not being able to serve everyone, which is why we developed the low-income discount program as it currently is.
Thank you for elaborating. And where would, if, so even currently, whether this, whatever council decides to do with this item, where would residents go to find more information about that?
Information is available on our website. They can also call our utility billing department. That information is available on our website, but also just for, to state it, in case anybody wants to take it down, the phone number is 707-449-5128, and they'd be happy to help you out. There is an application that you need to fill out, and then, of course, you have to show proof of enrollment in the PG&E program, which would generally require you to submit a copy of your bill. And once you have done those things and they are able to verify that, they will set you up on that discount program.
Thank you. And then just my comments on this particular item is that, you know, it sounded like council, or some council members were in favor of option one, but then different things or concerns came up. You know, I believe that we should have safe drinking water. I believe that we need to be in compliance with something that's already been set, whether we agree with it or not, for the state of California. There's a lot of other huge unintended consequences that I think will result of that if we are out of compliance. And we are fight, quote-unquote, fighting back in the ways that we do in the sense that we're a part of a litigation which limits our ability to discuss these items further. I know, I think a couple of us on council here have had discussions with elected members to hire, you know, state elected members to see if there's different avenues to support that. But here we are. So, you know, I think when the first two options came up, one of my concerns with option one was that the initial rate increase was perhaps too cost burdened for those who are most financially burdened. And so, you know, if council is not in support of that, I think we should at least move forward option, the second option, the, I forget what the technical term was, but option two, where it's kind of more scaled out over. Again, the concern about that is that we are deferring maintenance, which is kind of in this, which has exacerbated the situation that we're in now from, you know, just prior decisions based on what was going on at the time. So I think we have to be careful about not being in compliance and about a tremendous amount of unintended consequences. You know, if chromium six is known to cause lung cancer, if we don't address that, you can imagine the amount of lawsuits that can come towards us for not doing our best to be in compliance and keep our community safe. So I think that, you know, again, if council's not in support of one, we got to go with two to be in compliance.
Councilmember Stockton, or excuse me, Fremell?
Yeah, thank you. So I'm looking at this, I'm looking at scenario one at the end of 2030. And on scenario one, for the top user to be $416. The next level, 328, the next level 200, the lowest level 251. And then scenario two, it's basically about a $5 difference at the end of the day. So it's not a significant amount of money between scenario one and scenario two at the end of, at the end of 2030. Does that sound about right?
That's correct. The biggest difference is in that first-year jump, so that it's kind of evened out over the five-year period. But we end up just about at the same place at the end of the five years, as you mentioned, a $5 less.
Right. And I would agree with something that somebody said earlier. This isn't as a result of development coming in because the developers are paying all of this, all of these costs upfront. This is more along the terms of everything, all the infrastructure that's here and the infrastructure that's needing repair, these types of things. But man, I just look at this and I think about, I mean, that's a really big jump from $251 to $416 for some people. Now, I would agree with, somebody said, you know, I can afford it, I can absorb it. But I also know that there's a lot of elderly in the community and others that can afford it. And I just, I'm not trying to point a finger at anybody and hope nobody feels this way, but I just ask, how did we get here? Because, you know, we haven't had a rate increase in 11 years and now five years. And so where was the planning back then for this? You know, who was, who was looking forward to our future of where we're at now? And it just seems like there's, there's a, there's a big jump, you know? When we could have had 3% increase starting back, you know, 11 years ago, and we wouldn't be having this conversation today probably. So that's the thing that troubles me is, you know, kind of like, who was in charge for the last 10 years? Or we overlooked this? And I know that there's a lot that are factored in there with COVID and our fuel prices being extravagant and over the top, which causes a lot of our chemicals to be over the top. And PG&E raises our rates by 25% or 20%, and then another 20%, and we don't have any say over that. So I get all that, but I'm just thinking, how do we, how do we get the people that can't afford this? How can we, how can we, how can we get them any relief on under proposition 218? So I know I'm just rambling on, and I'm not trying to sit here and talk to hear myself talk, but it frustrates me. And I just think, you know, I mean, it's a big, it's a big jump, you know? It's just a big jump. So I'll stop with that. And you don't have to respond. I'm rambling, I'm sorry.
That's what your comments are for. You can share your thoughts. Councilmember Stockton?
Yes, and thank you, Councilmember Fremell, for bringing that up. I definitely think if we had a crystal ball, there's probably lots of things that would go back and change. But what I do appreciate is that staff did identify the current status of where we're at right now. I know that you're doing best to try to get us in a better situation. So since we've looked at the past, I guess for me, what I want to know is, what are we going to do moving forward so that we don't have a similar situation like this happen again? That's really what I want to know. I mean, I think we have a really clear understanding of where we're at right now, but what reassurances does staff have, or ideas does staff have to provide reassurances to the community that we're not going to find ourselves in a similar situation, you know, five, 10 years down the road once whatever decision is made today?
So I appreciate the question, Mr. Stockton, and I won't speak to the sins of the past administrations. We have a problem, and it's, I hate being the bearer of bad news, but this can has been kicked down the road for whatever reason. Going forward, our plan is to basically monitor this as we move forward. This should be done every five years, just to reassess, not necessarily to say, oh, we need to raise rates. But to reassess your rates, to see what your spending plan was, what your revenues actually are coming in. Because these are all projections. You have, you know, a CPI built into these, you have water sales, you have growth. All of those can change, and that change can either be to the good or for the bad. And reassessing that every five years and presenting it to this council to say, this is what the last five years have done. This is where your utilities department stands today. We are either healthy or not, and we need to either raise rates or we can hold steady.
So what is the cost to have that assessment done to the city?
So initially, when we brought Wildin onboard, I believe we, it was somewhere around $40,000. We've had some additional work being done because there was an extended period of time that we have contracted with, for these services. And then in addition, the mailing of the notices costs about an additional $3,000.
So about $100,000 to have this done every five years or so, and we may be able to avoid that. I would ask, like, regardless of what happens today, I think that needs to be codified in a policy that we do that, you know, every three to five years, or whatever, whatever staff recommends is the industry standard for something like this, to make sure we don't find ourselves sleeping on this. I mean, I know that there's a multitude of reasons that these things slip through the cracks. I get it. We are balancing plates on sticks sometimes, with even our feet feels like, with all of the different stuff. It makes it really difficult to keep track of everything, even for you and for staff. So if we codify it in some sort of policy, then maybe that would help us stay on top of it in the future. I am really concerned about the amount of money. Like, I get it, it is what it is. For scenario number one, it looks like the increases rate from over the five-year period go up depending upon each one, anywhere from, you know, rough calculations are 76, 118, and $165. And I know that you go through and you break things down. You know, how it makes the most sense with the usage and stuff. But I'd also, I'm also curious to know, you know, how many of our families that live in a home versus people who rent an apartment versus, you know, some of those, some of those, some of that information is is helpful for us when we're making some of these decisions. Because, you know, renters versus homeowners, I mean, people are really struggling to be able to afford houses in Vacaville, let alone keep them. So I don't know if there's a way that you can look at that based upon the water bill and, you know, kind of cross-referencing the address so that we know if it's an apartment complex versus a home and where those homes are located. But it would be interesting to know the level of usage that's happening. Which green line represents, you know, a family of three, or a family of five, or an apartment unit or something like that? So I think that would be helpful moving forward.
Well, I think in a very similar way, the way we do budgets, start forecasting. So there's a cost to do this 218 process, but you could be looking at this in, you know, three-year cycle. So you're projecting, how are we looking, how are we looking? It's starting to look like a cliff. Yeah, clearly, it's hard to look at this 11 years later and sit there and think that somehow. I know, I know where you stand on this, it's like this should have been done a long time ago. It's not, but here we are, so. Councilmember Ritchie?
Thank you.
Hold on, I'll get you here. Hold on a second. There you go.
All right, here we go. Thank you. I really appreciate everybody's comments. So passionate everybody shared. You know, I look at what we're doing here, we're legal cities, we're working hard, we're part of lawsuits with the state. I want to make sure our efforts aren't for loss. Like, there's a huge cost. We didn't really cover that much in the cost to get the existing wells we're going to utilize, the chromium six repaired. It was like 39 million? I don't remember. 32. Inflation's going to come. You know, I like the option two scenario because it's going to give us the latitude to make adjustments. I'm hopeful that the efforts we're doing to make sure that we are part of the lawsuit, pushing grind on the state to hopefully relieve this fee, and then that would be like a release valve. Because if that happens, say, in a year and a half or two years from now, it's within that five-year period, and we can see a reduction of all the fees, but it won't put us behind. Is that correct?
That's correct. Option two does give you that flexibility.
I mean, I think in two years, there's going to be a lot of changes in California. Hopefully, people that are appointed are gone, elected are out. So people could shift, and their ideas and policies, procedures gone there, could shift. And people are listening and paying attention. Maybe they should reassess how we got this place. So I think just in that account, hopefully it's going to benefit us. To where all, everything we're doing to legal cities and working together as a region to help fix this problem, that could put the pressure off that and then make up that gap a lot faster. So I know it's more, I'm supportive of option two. So, of course, option two, choice one, I don't know.
So you're saying the second preference alternative?
Yeah, yeah.
Vice Mayor Chapman?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I mean, it was 101 all the way. Didn't leave any, any area for to be questioned. I was going to, I'm, I like, well, first of all, first of all, being compliant, standing in compliance, it's very important. I mean, don't even have to put blinders on for that. That is a known. The, I agree with option two, however, you have mentioned in option two. Will you break that down? That is, we will still go with what's written in option one. However, for the rate, the rate to be set would be lower because that was option two, correct?
That's correct.
So you're blend, to blend the two, and option two will give us more flexibility later on than option three. So I'm totally against option three. And so I agree, option two, in my opinion, based upon your presentation and what we know and the lawsuit that is out there, not knowing when it's going to be addressed. I think that's the best one for the people of Vacaville.
And just a quick clarification, since you brought that up, it's a good point. The city of Vacaville could adopt any rate in these scenarios and set the amount separately at any time, correct?
I believe so. I'll defer to Melinda.
Yeah, you can set any rate up to the maximum that was in the notice, but you can implement it at a lower level.
So there's flexibility with whatever, but I see where you're going. I just wanted to make that clear.
Yes.
Okay. This would be a good time for a motion from someone.
I'll make, oh, well, since Craig mentioned, I'll second it.
My motion was to adopt scenario two, which actually is alternative one, adoption of scenario one, rates, implement rates proposed in section two.
We have a motion? Vice Mayor seconds. That's a roll call.
Sorry, just to clarify, it's in the staff report, it's item two, option number two.
So to be clear, it's a second preference alternative. So you're adopting scenario one, but you're implementing an alternative rate?
Yes, I just want to verbally indicate so everybody knows what they have.
Right. There's a lot of twos and threes and that stuff. Okay, so we have a motion, second roll call.
Councilmember Stockton? Councilmember Ritchie? Councilmember Silva? Councilmember Fremell? Councilmember Wiley? Vice Mayor Chapman? Mayor Carley?
No. It passes with the, with the scenario one, with the reduction of the rates to the preference alternative number two. So thank you for that, and hopefully the public will understand that this could be adjusted at any time in the future depending upon what this council decides.
But can I add one request?
Sure, yeah.
So our school district, one of our school districts had comments about this. Our request with council support that our staff work with the school district. They have different funding mechanisms to meet their budgetary needs every year.
I have them with Mr. Santa Padre in the next couple of weeks. We would have done it sooner, but with graduation and vacations, it couldn't happen before this meeting. But we've already been in communication.
Thank you. That's a good point. All right, yeah, thank you very much, and we'll move on to business.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This first business item is a discussion of general plan policies and city park standards, alignment of Carroll Way, and inclusionary housing in the East of Leisure Town growth area specific plan. We have your community development director, Aaron Morris, Albert Enel, senior planner, and team to give a presentation.
Good to go.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Albert Enel here to present an item before the city council related to the East of Leisure Town specific plan and general plan policies and city standards. Here to assist with this presentation, we have the city's consultant with MAS, Kathy Pease, as well as our director of community development, Aaron Morris. We felt it was appropriate to provide some background for the discussion of this item. We're talking about the East of Leisure Town specific plan, and this is a specific plan within the East of Leisure Town growth area. There is 1,317 acres within this growth area, 669 have already been approved and annexed into the city limits. There are 648 acres that are still located in Solano County and incorporated. And so it's, the subject is about and this is a specific plan within the east of Leisure Town growth area. There is thirteen-hundred-and-seventeen acres within this growth area. Six-hundred-and-sixty-nine have already been approved and annexed into the city limits. There are six-and-forty-eight acres that are still located in Solano County and incorporated. And so it's, the subject is about those six-hundred-and-forty-eight acres. In April and October of 2023, the city received requests from three different landowners to develop those properties with approximately 5,000 units. They were on three sites, the Raisins, Chen, Donaldson, and AMP Children Investments properties. Upon receiving these requests, we evaluated them and then conducted three public outreach meetings, one with Maplewood, one with Lockpadden, and then the general public at large. What we had heard from those community meetings were related to traffic impacts, affordable housing, community amenities, and a variety of different other topics. And those topics were used to craft what are called guiding principles. And those guiding principles were presented to city council in April of 2024. And the guiding principles are intended to grab a snapshot of what city council wanted to see with the development of a specific plan in this growth area. And so that's what was adopted, and that's what staff has been using to move forward with this project. So following council's direction in April 2024, staff began building a team consisting of consultants to develop the very first step, which is the crafting of a draft land use plan that would show how land uses would work in this growth area. Upon drafting that land use plan, we soon found out that there was a difference of design between the developer team. And so what we found out when working on this draft land use plan was that the developer team was looking to propose some development concepts that are, that were inconsistent with city policies and development standard, but we also found that they were inconsistent with city council's original direction found in the guiding principles. So this is not something that staff can move forward with without city council direction. So that's why we're here tonight, is to obtain city, hopefully obtain city council's direction on three particular topical areas. Of course, I'd like to provide mapping graphics that show the context. These are two growth areas that were identified in the 2015 general plan. So we're looking at the east of Leisure Town growth area. And these are the three property owners or properties that are located in that growth area. And you'll see a large chunk in the center of that is that six-hundred-plus acres that have already been annexed into our city limits. Onto the policy issue. So there's three policy issues that we're going to be covering tonight. The first is related to neighborhood parks and community parks. In our general plan, as well as our park and recreation master plan, we have policies that require minimum sizes for neighborhood parks and community parks to be able to meet specific site standards for amenities and to serve the community. For neighborhood parks, it's a minimum size of six acres. For community parks, it's a minimum size of ten acres. And the applicant proposing smaller parks, smaller neighborhood parks around two to four acres, and smaller community parks around six acres. There's an affordability mixture of housing types that was required to provide or create something for this larger development. And staff is going to be out talking about a general requirement of 10% of the units to be identified for affordability. Applicants are proposing to address this particular guiding principle by only dedicating a six-acre piece of land. And the third topic that we'll cover is the alignment of Carroll Way. We do have some policies, some reference documents that identify potential alignments, and we have some ideas on how to reserve areas to the north. And this is different than what the applicants are proposing to do for their proposed alignments. And we'll cover that with some graphics also. So on to the first topic. Parks is a pretty big topic for the city and for staff. Parks fulfill a variety of different functions. They provide breathing space in neighborhoods so it doesn't appear so close together. They promote healthy lifestyles. There are also places to play, explore, and relax. For this reason, there are specific policies that guide how parks need to be developed for new development within the city. It's identified in the city's constitution, which is the general plan, as well as the 2021 Parks and Recreation Master Plan that was adopted by city council. And those, both of those are really the larger documents that provide policies and standards for how to address adequate parks. Because of this history and these policies that are in this existing document, that was the reason for one of the guiding principles, which is one C that's on the screen in front of you. And what that says is that when we're working on developing this specific plan, we need to include interconnected public open space components and/or conservation plans and adequate parks and recreation facilities. Two turnkey parks shall be provided. Yeah, we underlined adequate parks and recreation facilities because that's really what this boils down to. The city staff references our general plan and our Parks and Recreation Master Plan as to what constitutes adequate parks. And so on the screen in front of you is an indication of what are the minimum standards that are expected to be provided to the city. We're looking at new development coming into the city. These are the minimum standards that are necessary in order to be able to serve future residents. Your neighborhood parks are intended to be a minimum of six acres. They can be up as large as nine acres. Your community parks, a minimum of 10, but they can be as large as 40 acres. And the reason why they have those sizes is because there's a variety of different amenities that are necessary to be programmed within those parks. Again, these are minimum designs that are necessary to be able to serve future residents. I won't go into every single detail on there. Our staff report also covers all of these specific details. So what we found while working with the developer team on the discussion about parks is that developer team wanted to go a little bit of a different route, where they wanted to provide smaller parks around two to four acres for neighborhood parks and six-acre community parks. What we found as a result of this request was that it was going to be needing a amendment to our general plan as well as an amendment to the Parks and Recreation Plan. And the reason behind this is because we have findings within our municipal code that say projects have to be consistent with our general plan. And to move forward with a deviation without amending our general plan would eventually move a project forward that would be inconsistent with our general plan, which we can't make that finding for. The developer's justification is identified as an attachment within the staff report. There are also here tonight that can help provide some additional context for the reasons for it. But we broke it down in a more simplified manner. Is that what they're finding is their, their requirement for trying to address missing middle is resulting in a higher density type of layout within the east of Leisure Town area. And what they're finding is that because of that higher density layout, there's a need for more smaller parks that are dispersed throughout the area to serve the larger population. And what they're hoping will provide convenient access to open space and recreational amenities throughout the development. These next illustrations are just illustrations. They're not in any means intended to convey this is the permanent layout of how these are going to go, but we felt that it was necessary to show a difference between park sizes only. So on the left side, option A shows development layout of the green spaces, which are those parks that provide minimum sizes. This is the Donaldson property. So there's two square parks that are six acre in size, and then there's a rectangular-looking park on option A that shows 10-acre parks. And then on B shows a different layout where there's smaller parks. Same goes for the Raisins Chen property. The left exhibit shows parks that meet the minimum size standards. On the right side, it's hard to tell on this one, but there are smaller parks. In the roundabout of the option B in the very center, there's a park budding that, as well as a smaller park up against the creek, and then a portion that's along the eastern edge of the development. And then for the AMP Children Investments property, this is again another illustration that shows a park that meets the minimum sizes for all the programming that we're hoping for, and then smaller parks that would be smaller. Again, indicating that these aren't, there's still a lot of work to do on the draft land plan. You may see completely different layouts later on based off of what city council provides for direction. But we felt that it was at least helpful to provide some illustration between larger parks versus smaller parks. All right. So staff's recommendation on this one is outright compliance with our existing policies. And there's a number of reasons why. We have found that smaller parks just increases maintenance. It increases the cost to the city that we weren't aware. Where we're having to send staff to multiple different parks, smaller parks to offload, to spend more time. And really, the savings comes in if you're able to send staff to one particular park that's a larger size, they can spend all their time all there instead of having to offload and load up over at different areas. But the other thing that we found out is that when you have smaller parks, they preclude a variety of different amenities that are necessary for those larger parks. And that was identified on the previous slides. We've got some experiences from other projects. So part of the reason is we've got these standards identified within our general plan and Parks and Recreation Master Plan, but we've also learned from previous experiences. And so South Town is a pretty good example where we're not afraid of the idea of developer-built parks. Magnolia Park is a park that was built by a developer, and they receive park credits for it. It was a fantastic park, and it's, I think it's almost under construction out there right now. So that was an example of how developer was able to meet their requirements within the general plan. But there's a particular item out there that you'll see is a South Town Park. It's a very small park. And the nice thing about that is that it's a demonstration of how you can have a project that meets our minimum standards within our general plan, but then goes above and beyond, and it provides a public benefit. And that's what's out there in the South Town development, is there is a small pocket park where they were able to say, we're going to meet our standards in Magnolia Park, but we're going to go above and beyond and provide more. And so in that particular case, we found that no fee credit was given for that smaller park because it was the developer's testament, a testament to provide additional benefits. A different lesson that we learned in Vanu Meadows Park was that there's a, I think, a seven-acre park that was originally allocated for in that specific plan. And the lesson in that particular situation was that the city probably could have been, done a better job with negotiating within a development agreement for the developer to build the park. In that particular development, we didn't negotiate that. Instead, we offered opportunities of you can either build it, or you can pay the park development impact fee. And so that park is not built as a result of that. But some of the other things that we realized from that is that park, when it was dedicated to the city, it was received in substandard design, meaning it was rated flat. It wasn't prepared for the city by the time we received it. And so what we're learning here is that not only should we be looking for parks that meet our minimum standards, but we should all should be negotiating for parks that are developer-built, but, yeah, that are developer-built, and that they're built early in the process. And that was one of the things that we were able to put into practice for North Village, where that particular development, the city negotiated and got the park to be built at least at, starting construction at 50%, and the developer is funding all of the construction for all of that. So we're not afraid of the idea of developers building parks. One last example I wanted to share with the council was in Roberts Ranch, and there are stroller parks. So going back to the idea of how do you measure a project's benefit? So compliance with our minimum standards that are identified in our general plan and our Parks and Recreation Master Plan, that's not a benefit. That's the minimum standards that if we're going to be receiving new land within our city, we have to have our minimum standards to meet the community's needs. How do we measure the public benefit? Roberts Ranch did that. So in Roberts Ranch, they provided a park to meet the compliance with the general plan along the eastern edge of the development. That's right along the row of tracks, and those are currently being built by the developer now. It's a developer-funded park. But the developer went one step beyond that. And what they did was they identified the installation of five stroller parks throughout that development. And that was an example of them going above and beyond and providing a public benefit for the city. No fee credits were given for those smaller parks. This was just something that the developer was able to do when it was able to provide, to provide that connectivity. And so the stories that we're trying to paint with this particular picture is, is that staff's observation is that if we require minimum compliance with our existing standards, and we get the base design figured out, then we can, we will know what the measurable benefit will be beyond that. What else is the developer able to provide for the community that is a benefit to the community? That concludes my portion of the presentation. Here to cover the affordability component will be our director, Aaron Morris.
Thank you, Mayor Carley. Members of the council, thank you, Albert. So going back to when the guiding principles were adopted by the council in April of 2024, guiding principle four A identified the need to establish an inclusionary housing goal to ensure integrated mixed-income neighborhoods. So I do want to be very clear with council and the public. There was no specifics given. It wasn't 10% or 5% or what, how specifically the inclusionary housing would be provided. But the idea was that working with staff, the developer would establish a goal or a strategy with the desired outcome of ensuring integrated mixed-income neighborhoods. So as we touched on earlier this year with the inclusionary housing study session, there are a variety of ways for private developers to produce affordable housing as part of a new development. In some cities and in some projects, they pay in LUFI. That does not guarantee those homes are built in that neighborhood or that they're built anytime soon, but is a way to contribute toward affordable housing. It does not necessarily contribute toward this development having a mixed-income neighborhood. Another option that is often used is a developer will dedicate bare land to a city. And that's something that, there is actually bare land all over the state of California that's dedicated to cities for affordable housing. And then the real challenge is how do you turn that bare land into actual homes? And so that's a second option. A third option that some developer employs is to construct offsite affordable housing. That was not really germane to the goal for this particular project. And then the reason why staff is recommending that the strategy that we all developed together include onsite affordable housing is because that would be how the mixed-income integrated neighborhoods could be achieved. We're the next slide. The developers, this is, the reason why this is at council is that we've had very productive discussions. We've had very heart-to-heart discussions. But ultimately, at this point, one of the three developers is proposing something that could potentially help for affordable housing. And that is the Donaldson Ramos site. They're proposing to dedicate a six-acre site that could be developed into deed-restricted affordable housing. The other two developers are not proposing anything related to the goal. We don't believe that right now, these proposals meet the guiding principle. It's hard to put the burden of the affordable housing on just one of the three. And again, it's not clear how we have mixed-income neighborhoods if the housing is on one site in one part of the development. The other concern that staff has about the dedication of land absent other, other contributions is that land does not guarantee construction of housing within a reasonable time. And the third final point on this slide, that waiting to build affordable units can create community division, neighborhood opposition. I think this council has lived through that in multiple projects, not just affordable housing, but also market-rate housing like the South Town Apartments. It's very hard for, and even the Victory Gardens project that the planning committee approved on appeal. It's very hard for neighbors to understand that affordable housing was planned all along when it takes 20 or 30 years for that housing to be produced. So this is why staff doesn't feel at this time, what the, one of the three developers is proposing is really aligned with the guiding principle. And that's why we wanted to bring this to the council for some consideration. And I'll wrap up with my final slide, my two, two more slides. Part of why staff's concerned that this project do its part and also achieve these mixed-income neighborhoods is that the city's obligations to produce deed-restricted affordable housing just increase with every time we go through a housing element. And as I alluded to earlier, there's a lot of bare land dedicated for affordable housing. In Vacaville, we've had up to three entitled affordable housing projects on bare city land that just cannot be developed because there's no money to develop them. It's very competitive to get funding to build housing right now. Staff, in discussion with the developer, it's mostly been what, what all do you think you can do to help achieve this, this goal? So we've put out there that if the developer is able to come up with a strategy that could ensure that 10% of the units within the overall development were affordable, affordable to a way at different affordability levels, I mean, that would certainly ensure mixed-income neighborhoods. I do just want to be very transparent with the council. This 10% is not a magic number. It's not a fixed number. It's just to give the council something to think about. So at present, the Donaldson Ramos property is posing a six-acre site that could generate a kind of a round number of about 150 units in one spot within the development. So if the council was, felt good about the 10% or some, some percentage idea, 10% of the current proposed unit count would be 438. And so that could happen in a variety of fashion, whether it's apartment complexes, or whether it's single-family homes at affordable rates. That's sort of what's on the table here. And the last slide is going to Kathy to talk about the transportation and circulation issues.
Good evening. The next couple of slides, I will be talking about the potential lines for Carroll Way. Carroll Way is planned as a two-lane facility that would provide a north-south connection and provide a reliever to the Leisure Town Jepson Parkway. That would be a parallel facility. So we are looking tonight for council direction to determine connections on the northern and southern areas of the specific plan. So the middle area has either been built or is under construction or planned by approved projects that Albert had alluded to earlier. Next slide. This gives a little bit of context. It shows the overall area and that transportation facilities will be needed for the future, including the near-term 2035 as well as that build-out. So the first property for Raisins Chen is to, it incorporates Carroll Way consistent. There's a proposal, we have two proposals, one that is consistent and that one that does not provide a north connection to the Lockpadden community. So that's one of the things that we're going to look at. Next slide. So more specifically, this shows the two options. Staff recommends option A. As you can see, there's a green space that would provide for a future connection. Now that Now that could be a landscape corridor, and there's no guarantee that that would be needed. There's nothing that would require that to be a connection in the future, but we think it's really important, not knowing what the plans for the future are, is to leave that option in case it's needed in the future. With the next proposal, we have the AMP Children's Investment Property. They too have shown us two options. One would show an alignment connecting to Leisure Town Road, and then the other one would end before their parcel, and it would just provide neighborhood access with a loop system. Next. This is what the two options are, as you can see. So staff is recommending the Option A for a couple of reasons. One, it provides a direct route to Leisure Town Road. This is consistent with our general plan policies that recommend that transportation systems not be circuitous. It also would provide a good transit corridor as well. And as you can see, Option B, it would, Carroll Way would essentially end right before or after Frye Road, and then there'd be an internal roadway loop, and then eventually neighborhood traffic could get out onto Leisure Town Road.
So here's the game plan after receiving city council's direction on these three items. Our plan is to update the draft land use plan based off of city council's direction, as well as some of the concepts that the developer team has, was to provide to us, and possibly return to city council in August. Following that direction, we would work with community members as part of meetings to receive their feedback on this draft land use plan. We'd also set up, send out a notice of preparation that we would be starting the environmental impact report, and looking to receive public comments about what things need to be evaluated and incorporated as part of that environmental document. And then we would also have some more public hearings on the project in the spring and summer of 2026. But this is a crucial step. We do need a city council's direction on these three topical items before we can move forward with a formal draft land use plan that would come before the city council in August. So we have a recommendation for city council on these particular topical items. Of course, we have our traffic engineer team here to talk about any questions that the city council might have regarding circulation. We have the city's park planners that are also here to help answer any questions related to those park standards. We also have the developer team, all three of those property owners, that are here to help answer any questions, also present to you their perspective about these particular topics here. With that, that concludes our presentation.
Thank you. What I'd like to do also, just given the fact that this is a partnership that we've been working with the, between the city and the development team, the council, is to hear from the developers who have put a significant amount of time in this, obviously, looking at the staff report and their comments, they have a different opinion. I'd like to give them the opportunity to express their, their why. So any member of the development teams that they want to come forward, I'm not going to limit you to three minutes, but within reason, if you could share how you can help convey between your comments to the, the staff report, and also what you've heard tonight, your reasoning. Being polite out there?
Yeah, yes.
I'll let you rough yourself up. Thank you for the time. Good evening, Mayor Carley, Vice Mayor Chapman, and members of the council. We appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight and, and the extra time that you're allowing us to talk. Obviously, we've been involved in advancing the planning process for east of Leisure Town and Donaldson property in particular. My name's Todd Chambers with Lewis Plan Community. Sorry to induce myself, representing the Donalds. It may be delayed one or two months, as noted in the staff report. We feel it's important that the items before you tonight are being presented so you can provide us with meaningful direction. Regarding the background of the planning process, I wanted to clarify that the property owners proposing the east of Leisure Town specific plan, as shown in Attachment 1, includes about 505 acres. So the 1,317 referenced east of Leisure Town is comprehensive with what's existing there today and some other land, but our proposal is about 505 between the three property owners. The three landowner representatives and city staff have been working together comprehensively to plan this area, and primarily to address the need of what has been commonly referred to as the missing middle housing. In other words, more attainable housing is the way we like to look at it. As you're aware, the city has a substantial housing inventory in low-density and higher-density housing ranges, but it's lacking opportunities of housing in the more of the medium and medium-high density ranges, what, what we're proposing. Our vision and what we believe the city has indicated it desires is to develop the remaining lands east of Leisure Town in a manner that is different from what has been done in large part, traditionally, what has been developed traditionally in the city. We want to provide a larger range of housing opportunities for future residents, such as employers of the employees of the biotech industries and Travis Aireman. In order to accomplish this, we're here to ask your consideration of a few items that will affect how our projects are designed. So touching on the neighborhood and community parks issue, it's appropriate that July is Parks and Recreation Month. Coming up, as stated in the staff report, we agree that the availability of plentiful well-designed and well-maintained parks and recreation facilities significantly contribute to a higher quality of life in Vacaville. There's no question there. We're not looking to change the amount of park acreage that's required to be dedicated under the city's current general plan policies or the facilities identified in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Rather, we're asking the city to consider some flexibility in how we allocate the parks and related sizes throughout the proposed neighborhoods. For example, the overall specific plan area would require approximately 20 acres of community park. Given the makeup of properties in the question, perhaps sharing or splitting a 10-acre community park between the Donaldson and Chen properties makes sense, so that both projects can work towards meeting the requirement in a comprehensively planned manner. So in other words, we'd like to have you consider not necessarily one property burdened with all the park land, allow us to try and share it in that manner, on the, on the community park side. For the neighborhood parks, we believe that providing some level of parks in neighborhoods that are less than six acres is a benefit to the neighborhood and provides opportunities for residents living in the immediate area to utilize those smaller parks, which create, cultivates, and encourages an environment where neighbors gather and get to know each other versus driving to a larger park that serves a larger area. For example, having a three- to four-acre park in a neighborhood surrounded by homes fronting the park encourages residents in that neighborhood to use the park for gatherings, events, or simply leash up your dog and visit with other neighbors and dog owners. Another alternative to consider is that the Donaldson property is proposing a substantial community clubhouse amenity for our project. The clubhouse, pool facilities, recreation components such as playgrounds, half-basketball courts, pickleball, tennis courts, and open turf fields, things that are listed in the city's policies for what types of amenities and facilities you'd like to see would be maintained by homeowners association. So while it's not a public park, it does provide a significant recreational opportunity for our residents at no cost to the city. However, we, we'd like the city to consider credit towards park dedication as part of something that would be an amenity to that type of a project. Looking at the mixed-income and affordable housing issue, we believe the proposed specific plan and missing middle housing options will ensure that a supply of housing of different type, size, and affordability will be provided in order to meet Vacaville's housing needs for the current and future residents within the community. As stated in the staff report, the cities, the city has not adopted an inclusionary housing ordinance, and the guiding principle states that an inclusionary housing goal should be established, as, as staff indicated, for the project and will ensure integrated mixed-income neighborhoods. We believe the city staff is overreaching on this guideline by suggesting that 10% of the housing units or over 400 units should be provided for different levels of affordable housing. Given costs associated with entitlements, infrastructure, the potential for significant development impact fee increases that are being considered, services CFDs that are burning projects, they all add a significant, and adding in a subsidized housing requirement further moves the proposed projects away from providing lower-cost or more, more attainable market-rate housing. Those costs are going to be, need to absorb by other residents. So if you're putting in affordable housing, the people that are going to be buying the market-rate housing are subsidizing the others, and it's just going to increase the cost of the market-rate housing. The east of Leisure Town specific plan is being disadvantaged, as no other master plans in the city, North Village, Lagoon Valley, Brighton Landing, Roberts Ranch, South Town, the farm at Alamo Creek, none of those were required to meet an affordable housing standard. We're open to working towards a solution, but not to the level that city staff has outlined. I look at affordable housing as an issue, and I think it should be looked at more comprehensively. And it's always placed on the home builder or the developer, residential developer to provide affordable housing. Perhaps consider businesses that are coming into the city, or employers that are bringing businesses into the city to help provide some affordable housing, as people on incomes that would qualify are probably hired by those firms or companies. So I appreciate your, the opportunity to speak tonight. I know the other property owners want to say a few words, so thank you for your time. I'll answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. I might call you back.
Right.
It takes a bit for me to get there, but.
Just be careful.
I'm always careful. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, it's my pleasure to be in front of you. It's been a while, but, and Todd and I are probably going to overlap on some things, but I'm going to take a different approach. And that is, I'm going to start out with the background. The background in about 2011, this whole project was all laid out and was pretty much all approved and was set aside as urban reserve. Since that time, it was recommended by staff that all that information be thrown out, and we start a new, and we start a new process. The process is burdensome, extremely burdensome. We're one specific plan. We've been asked to do is one specific plan to three properties. We all three agree, and we think it's a benefit to the city. But at the same time, whenever it comes down to doing parks and such as this, they want to look at us as individuals. Yes, Donaldson and Racins want to share a park. We want to do things. There's reasons for us wanting to do it. Now, we're, we're not just trying to be cheap, get away with not building something. The goal is, and this is a question I give to you because I feel that we're doing the fight for the city. The goal, as I understand it, is to build workforce housing. You can call it middle whatever, or whatever you want to call it. I call it workforce housing. You want to build it for people that are coming in. But yet, yet at the same time, you keep throwing burdens at us because there's two things. If you want your workforce housing, then we've got to talk about and, 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 and do something regarding the, the, the cost, the fees, the, the roadway of Carroll going into Lockpadden and leaving land set aside that we don't know if it's ever going to go there. All these are all cost, and they're driving everything up to where your housing implementation that you have requested, that we have all, are all in favor of, we're trying to do, we're trying to build this for you. We're, we've all laid it out, but it's become, it's becoming rapidly unattainable, rapidly. Fees, I'm not going to go into them right now unless you ask me to go into them. But fees right now are, you know, you're looking at us all of a sudden coming up with 100, 200% in fees. They don't work. You've all been involved in that. I can get into that in the next session. Parks, we're asking for it to be smaller, not smaller, but more usable. We want to do theme parks. We want to do things that, 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 that work for the development and yet provide the city, but you know, and we're more than willing to build them. I was more than willing to build the Vanden Park. The plans never got done. We were never going to get reimbursed. Full them out. It never got built. It's not built today. Fees have been collected. Still not built. So that's a problem. We're willing to build parks because they help us sell our product. And, and we're, we're all very much in favor of parks. We always have been. But sometimes we ask the city to look at it. Not everything is programmable, meaning for baseball, soccer to make money. Right now, we're building more homes and more of us gray-haired folks are moving into your town, and we're not bringing kids with us. The schools and the kids count is diminishing. Some people want smaller theme parks, which would be pickleball. I only saw it for the first time. Looks fun. I need to try it. But the bottom line is, you build a programmable park, which, which is designed for soccer and, 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 and baseball, so that the Parks Department can make money renting out the fields and, and doing all this. We're in a different world today, and so we're trying to build to what the market is. We know what the market is. We spent thousands of dollars to find out what the market is and who we're trying to build to. And right now, we would like to build the, you know, our, our, our product to what, to what you want, but it looks like we're being pushed into, which I'm going to eventually get to, but I'll get to it now, to changing our program, and instead of building this workforce housing, I think that we're going to be maybe looking at you and saying, all right, if you want the fees, if you want the park, if you want inclusionary housing, if you want, and you want, you want, you want, fine. Let us build our standard six, eight, 10,000 square foot lots and sell seven, eight, nine hundred thousand dollar homes, and then we can afford, and people that are buying those can afford your fees. And you won't have to worry about your schools because they're not going to bring kids because they're going to be older folks. That is not what I understood this city wanted. I've been building and working here and made a good living out of your city, and I love it dearly, and I, I've, I've really enjoyed working here. But to me, it's starting to get out of control, and we are, we do not have a clear guidance on what you really want. And the guidance is set up by what staff is telling and working with us with. We've been having meetings for two months for crying out loud, and they ask us to give our input. We give our input. We don't get any answers back. We've, we've talked about fees. We brought up a lot of fees that are, that are in there.
Hey, Rich, I'm going to ask you to come back around. We're not going to talk about the fees right now, but if you could get to any other issue on the property, because I know there's Carroll Way or.
Carroll Way, all right, I'll just, I'll go down on Carroll Way. I don't know why we're laying out and being forced to lay out a project that goes into Lockpadden, that Lockpadden people do not care for, and our land is going to set aside. And as we set aside land, it's fewer houses. Fewer houses means that we're going to have to charge more for other houses. Okay? So that's, that's, that's number one. Parks, I've pretty well mentioned that. We want to work together with our parks to make it function and make it work, but we want to integrate it with new ideas, and we would like to look at it instead of the old ideas of six, eight-acre parks that are programmable parks. We'd rather look at the smaller ones that make sense for the development and the people we're building to. Inclusionary housing, inclusionary housing doesn't work for anybody. I've been in this business for a long time. We've tried to build it. I've ended up tearing down duplexes because it didn't work. The people that ended up using inclusionary housing do not get any benefit for it unless they live in it for 30 years. They can't sell it and make a profit. It is set aside. So it doesn't benefit them other than for basic housing. So it's not a benefit to them. It's not a benefit to the neighborhood. Does it give them motivation to really take care of their property? So that's one of the things that we found that we didn't care for. They didn't take care of it because they weren't going to get a profit out of like you and the rest of the people that own a home. So this is something that we want to take a closer look at. Inclusionary housing hasn't benefited anything, and it's a major cost because whatever we're charged, we have got to pass on to the new buyers, which raises the fees, which takes me back, that we can't afford to build. me back that we can't afford to build the workforce housing. So I'll sort of summarize it with that, and let's see if there's anything on the short end that I'm missing. Now, I've hit your, I've hit the main ones without hitting the fees. How's that?
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
One last developer.
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Greg Brun with Steria Land Group, representing the A&amp;P Children's Investment Property. Albert, would you mind putting up this slide for the policy issues for me, please? And by the way, I'd be the first in line to buy a ticket to watch Rich play pickleball. So I'll go through these items based on this slide. So neighborhood and community parks. We, the more successful master plans don't just have one or two large parks. They have multiple parks that serve the communities. So I echo Todd's comments regarding that. We are not asking to reach the amount of parks. We're asking to have more flexibility in how we provide the required park spaces. When we first started this process, it was under the guise that the city wants to do things differently than what they've done in the past. If we comply with what the general plan requirements are, we're doing the same thing that developers have done in the past. We're wanting to collaborate and actually do things differently as was requested through the specific plan process. We reached out to builder partners and looked at, well, let me back up. Of our developer group, just representing the property owners, not including our consultants, we all have collectively over 150 years of development experience in the state of California and actually in the Western United States. So we are not carpetbaggers. We are not people that don't have experience in developing successful projects. Todd, with the Lewis Companies, and Rich has reiterated about what he's done just in the community. I grew up in Vallejo. I've done development in Solano County my whole career. My wife and companies that she's worked for built in Vacaville and in Solano County. So we all come here with stakeholders' mentality of, and my wife and I live in Solano County. So we're here to do projects that we want, that we could drive through later in life and be proud that we were a part of, which I know this council feels the same way. Affordable mix of housing types require 10% affordable units. This is the first that we've heard of it when the staff report was issued. We've never discussed this in any of our meetings with staff. We feel that for us to provide missing middle housing, that in and of itself is providing a portion of affordable housing that's required in the community. Alignment of Carol Way. Albert, would you mind putting up the two options for the A&amp;P property? The reason we requested option B is that we feel that option A would essentially not only bifurcate our project, but would create a speedway through the project that makes it unsafe for folks that are wanting to access just one six acre park. We're proposing three, two acre parks, which we had a call this morning, which Tom Filippi was involved in, was trying to find out what kind of amenities would a two acre park afford. And Tom shared with us, minus the parking lot at the Play All Park, it's roughly two and a half acres. We're not proposing that we would do a Play All Park. What we're proposing is that we would do, as Rich was talking about, and what Todd was talking about, is that they would be themed parks that would have different amenities for different neighborhoods. And if you look at option B, those green lines are paseos that would allow people to have access to the parks without having to cross a collector's street, which is proposed for Carol Way. So these are some of the things that we had talked about. We'll get into the fees in the next segment of the meeting, but if you're wanting to provide missing middle housing, and if you're wanting to do things differently, we want to be a part of that process, and we want to collaborate with the city. But the way that things are moving forward, like I said, if we have to do general plan compliant parks, et cetera, you're just going to get more of the same, unfortunately. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Before I have staff make any other response or questions, I'm going to open the rest of this time up to the public, the general public, if anyone wishes to make a comment. And these will be limited to three minutes.
Hey, John. I forgot one to list.
Yeah, questions may come back, but I'm going to leave it up to the public. Good evening.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. I had a lot of stuff written down, but since hearing some of the developers' ideas, I'm a little more open-minded to things that they might come up with. But in general, enjoying public parks is one of my passions. And I see providing, I have felt that a good-sized park is the minimum of six acres, like we have in the city at this point in the general plan and the Parks and Recs Department Master Plan. But as one of the developers was mentioning about parks that are being themed, perhaps there would be something that could be appealing for a senior, like container gardening or music events. And it could be possibly doable in a four acre park. I'm not sure about a two acre park. So I hope that we could talk about some good ideas, but keep in mind, we need some space. The other part of having more good-sized parks, in my mind, is what the Parks and Recs Department talks about for programming. And it could be something as simple as a camp, which could be for seniors, learning a craft, something that would be doable in a larger space. So I wanted to just uphold the city staff for all the work they've done, and their guidance is really valuable for all the experiences, the mistakes that have been made. We don't want to repeat, but we want to make things enjoyable. So thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. As a member of John Q. Public, I would just like to remind all of you, ladies and gentlemen, that these developers came to you. They wanted to build here because it benefits them. They're not here out of the goodness of their hearts. Now, if there's something they come up with that city staff says, oh, okay, maybe that is a better idea, then all right. But please do not change what the city requirement, requirements are, or what the city needs in order to accommodate these people. They came to you looking to build. You didn't go ask them. The other thing is that they're really worried, you know, I've sat through a lot of council, maybe sat through more of it, but there's been a lot of talk about the city is required to get more affordable housing. City staff is saying, hey, we need a certain amount of this project's going to be affordable housing. I don't care what they're whining about now because, well, back when such and such project was built, they weren't required to do that. Well, things changed. Situation's changed. These gentlemen know that. They're in business. Let's not be their patsies. They came to you looking to build a project. If the city requires a certain amount of affordable housing, they're smart businessmen. They'll figure it out. They're not going to like it. But you gentlemen, ladies, gentlemen, should make them do it because, once again, they came to you.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment at this point. And if there's any comments that staff would like to follow up on based upon the comments of the developers, but also from the public.
I think I'll try to start with the easiest issue, which is actually also one of the most sensitive issues, was the interface of the northern property with Lockpatten. From the very beginning, council and staff talking to residents of Lockpatten, we've been very, you've been clear, we've been clear. Nothing about this plan is intended to force any change in Lockpatten. It's an unincorporated area. People that live there can live there as long as they like. They've got their kind of rural lifestyle there. But one of the challenges for this project with these new homes and possibly missing middle densities is how to create a buffer so that this new development isn't right up against this rural enclave. So the way that staff views option A is it doesn't force or construct a road that goes to the edge of Lockpatten and possibly beyond, but 30, 40, 50 years from now, if the Lockpatten area develops, particularly with all of happening north of it, the Northeast Growth Area, this provides an option. And it's, the way this initial design was, is intended to be, it could be landscaped as part of a buffer, but then ultimately that land remains available to be purposed into a road at such time in the future. So I just want to clarify, it's not, as Tom Filippi mentioned, an effort to terrorize anyone. It really is intended to be that long-term planning to create a robust circulation network in the area. A couple other things about the parks, and also we do have park staff here if you really want to get into some of the nitty-gritty, but staff has not expressed any opposition to the concept that the developers came up with kind of early on. For example, place the community park between the two developer properties, you know, Donaldson Ramos and Racins Chen. It's really been about the size of that park and whether or not it meets our minimum standards and whether it can accommodate those features that are part of the Parks and Rec Master Plans. That's something that we've been very open to, and there's no, nothing that would preclude that. A couple other parks things. One of the things about the, I kept thinking was theme parks, but themed parks, is that the city's Parks and Rec Master Plan recognizes that neighborhood parks typically serve residents within like a quarter mile, and community parks are serving a broader audience. But part of why the plan calls for these sizes that allow these features is that the park is for the folks in this development, but it's also for the folks beyond this development, and it's also part of the city's public park offerings. So that's where I think staff and developer right now have kind of a difference of opinion is how these smaller themed parks provide that similar equivalent public amenity to Vacaville residents with the kind of recreational features that are in the Parks and Rec Master Plan. And then the other comment that was made, I just think it's important to be very clear about, when staff is giving feedback to developer about, oh, this doesn't seem to work, or this is an issue, it isn't based on staff opinion or us trying to decide what's right or good. It really has been grounded solidly in the general plan, in the adopted guiding principles, in the city's development standards. And our staff report goes into that in great detail, but I just want to be clear, I've been very careful with my team that we're not arbitrary and capricious, we're not city designers, we're not freelancing here. We are really trying to make sure that when this project goes to council, we've not missed anything, and you're able to feel confident that it complies with policy. I think there was one last thing on my last, sorry, I'm not going in order. I would like to go in order. And I think I clarified this earlier, but the 10% number was kind of put out there to give the council something to think about. At this point, one of the three developers has proposed one inclusionary solution. So the question for the council is, is that sufficient? Would you like the developers to explore additional options? Back when we took the inclusionary study session to you all, you asked for some information about, further data about starter homes and homeownership and how ownership units can build wealth. That work is happening in community development. Our consultant to come back to council. So if you're interested in continuing the inclusionary conversation, that's the direction we would be looking for, whether it's 10% or just continue the conversation. I think that's where we're at. And if there were any other questions that, Albert, you, because you were also taking notes, to make sure we don't leave anything unanswered.
There were a couple of comments that I felt might be helpful to at least clarify. The general point of view, and I would say that one of the nice things about this whole process is that the developer team does have quite a bit of years of experience. So it is, it's very nice to be able to work with that experience because it's not a very rigid process. We can actually have good conversation back and forth. I'm sorry to hear that they're feeling that this is a burdensome process. Many of these standards are not new. The standards for minimum park size has been in our general plan for quite some time. It's been identified in our Parks and Recreation Element primarily since 2015. Even before then, we had a lot of stuff, so. The discussion we're having about parks, it's a high-stakes discussion, and involves a lot of accountability. And that's a very tough discussion because it's one of our core items within the city's values. We, the claim is made that, you know, we're doing the same thing, and I would say we're not. Because what we're doing differently about this process is we are really trying to get a project that can meet those minimum standards. And we have plenty of experiences in the past where we've heard, well, we'll do it differently this way, or what if we do it this way? And it just hasn't panned out. We've got lots of experiences where parks that were dedicated to city just haven't been built, and they're being built late. Cordero's Park was one of those examples where it didn't get built until 75, 80% of the build-out. One of the recent successes that I want to be able to point back to is what happened in North Village, which was we changed the way that things work, and it was with the help of this council, with applying pressure on the development. Cordero's Park was built late in the game. That changed with Area Plan Two, where this council said, we're not going to do that anymore. Not only is the park going to get built earlier in the process, it's going to be built by the developer, and it can have themes. I think Councilmember Silva had mentioned wanting to see biomanufacturing type of theming on there. There's no reason why we can't have our city design parks that meet our standards and have theming, and create a beautiful place that people can go and congregate at. That's the minimum requirement. The developer is proposing to annex into our city an obligation to support 40, almost 4,500, maybe around 4,000 residential units. That comes with infrastructure, landscaping, water, all kinds of law enforcement and fire services. Our observation is the least that we could start with is compliance with our minimum standards, and then we can work beyond that to create a really awesome project.
Yeah, thank you. In the interest of how we're going to get through this kind of recommendation, because, I mean, again, this is a business item, but it almost feels like a kind of staffing study where you're getting direction. And so I'm going to need the council to be as succinct as possible. There is a few different elements. There's arc minimums. That's a standard that's set by policy. There is the ask for potential inclusionary housing, where developers are saying, you're asking for workforce housing, missing middle. However, the development is asking for what either could be in lieu of fees, because right now, we don't have an inclusionary zoning policy. Past practice has been in lieu of fees, in, well, no, not anything in case, but sometimes there's properties that have been donated so that there can be development agreement that can provide for fees. We may not get the whole answer because this is not a policy discussion on inclusionary housing. Carol Way, and I think separate from that is Lockpatten, because that's a sensitive one, I think, that can be appreciated. But so that the council can fairly give direction, I think it would be important if the council could actually, without a lengthy explanation, just express the direction. So I'm going to go in the order of the lights that are on here. Councilmember Ritchie?
John, I'm going to try my best. I'll work in reverse. I think the last thing on the list was the Carol Way, I think slide 22. Does, is it possible? So just really quickly, just, I had a conversation earlier. I had a chance to talk to one of the developers, Greg, and we had the same point. What I saw from that immediately this weekend was reviewing is, okay, best intentions, city is just trying to do the right thing, but thinking in reality, well, what I do, what most people do. People have turned Leisure Town into a freeway. It says 45, they're going 60. The path Leisure Systems is like water. They're going to travel as easy as. They're going to see two, as soon as they see that light turn red, they're going to follow the right-hand lane, and they're going to turn that street into a freeway. That street is a 25 mile per hour street, it's been turned to 45 mile per hour. Because people have no vested interests in that community, they're going to bail through that neighborhood to get to Fry Road, and California has a zero parking restriction. There's going to be cars lined up on each side of the streets, creating even a narrow place to drive, and kids are going to get hit. It's just the reality is Leisure Town's fast, people don't follow the directions. They're going to bail through and not care about the community, and their people are going to get hurt. So just for the fact of the design, option two requires people to slow down, it's going to, for me, it's a safety issue. It's an easy pass-through. It's going to happen. Next, I guess, type of succinct, we can move to, oh, in that place, I'll talk about the parks all at once. I guess next on the list was parks. I remember in my mind, I remember specifically Councilman Stockton, like half a year ago, he reiterated, we want to make sure this project is... he reiterated, we want to make sure this project is great, it's grand, it's different. So, I do have a little friction with business as usual. If we've asked them, and I've asked them, to make this project different, how can we use same guidelines for the last 20, 30 years? So, we've got to be open to some kind of direction, an alteration of the parks. I do believe having, so, a two-acre park, I did just study, a football field is exactly two acres, sorry, it's 1.5 acres, soccer field's two acres. If you're going to have built-ins to these parks at two acres, say 40% of the parks are going to have sidewalks, built-ins, some amenities, you're only going to have a 60% of that two-acre park is going to be open space. That's not enough for a kid, so I covered this with Greg earlier. If we reduce the parks in that area from three to two, and possibly expand them to three and a half or four acres, we've got to figure it out. That gives enough leeway to have the built-in amenities plus enough room for this natural discovery play. So, I really think that's important. I mean, programming is great, but kids, they just need to figure it out. Give them open field and let them have fun. I don't tell them to climb here or climb there. It's a big part of society, trying to do some programming. Just let them figure it out, and that's what open fields do. The last part, I heard you talking about the working group, the 10%, I would love to be a part of the working group, talk about affordability, that's something I went on with very big passion, I could go for an hour on that, I'm trying to be succinct. When it comes to affordable housing, when I review the staff report, there's nothing regards to the, the low density is low density, I get it, the medium to low density and the medium density, there's nothing describing the lot size. The state of California passed a Senate bill that's required lots to have certain feet, so we don't have to fight with that anymore. But if we're going to try to do affordable housing, there is a lot of studies and caveats, and trying to force inclusionary housing to make something affordable, it is hard to work, but what we need to do is, those medium to low-density lots, if they're going to be 3,000 square feet, we need to find out how to work with the developers to create homes that are affordable. We don't need to build 2,000 square foot homes and call them affordable, it's not going to happen. We need to get back to a common sense of, I went on a rant, tangent about Westwood, all these areas, cottages, townhomes, cluster homes. Example, Portofino's a great example, we need to figure out how to do homes at 1,500 square feet, 1,300 square feet, three bedrooms, one half bath, two bedrooms, one half baths. The current construction cost, I looked up today, the low range, not everyone needs a wolf and Viking in their house, it's 250 square feet, dollars per square foot to 500. If they do a 3,000 square foot lot, a 1,500 square foot home, at 275 dollars per square foot, we can deliver a home at 412,000. The loan limit in our county is 700, it's almost half. We can get it done. We don't have to force some guideline on people to make housing affordable, we just got to understand that everyone needs their first house to be Taj Mahal. We need opportunity to move up. Affordable housing, the biggest part about what you're talking about, that's affordable. Forcing it to be affordable by a guideline, it doesn't allow them to get equity. By being in a house, what happens is, if you're married, you get to write $12,000 of mortgage interest. If you're filing double, it's 24,000. They give you the house for four years, it's the only benefit they get, mortgage interest deduction, they don't get any interest or equity.
So, Greg, just in the interest.
So, I'm sorry, yeah.
I love your analogies, because they're good.
Yeah, I mean, the.
So, I see where you're going with that.
Yeah, the passion is like, I'm all for redirecting, making more community parks, I want to make sure it works, but when it comes to housing, it's falling on deaf ears.
So, I'm going to start being more specific. Do you have an opinion on the Lockpatten?
I really don't care about that. I care about houses that people in the community can live and move to that are affordable, and it's going to be at a $400 price point to allow people to come to our community, live here, move up, and stay here. I mean, I don't care about a passage way.
Okay. I'm just trying to do this in the interest of time. Councilmember Stockton.
Thank you, and you can put the timer up for me if you want to, Mr. Mayor. I agree.
Mr. Chapman might be calling out the timer.
Yeah, exactly. Well, okay, I'll look down there. First off, I want to thank you for your presentation. I want to thank you for following the general plan, right? I think that the policies, procedures, and plans that we implement should be followed, but I also think that it's great that you came to us recognizing that there are some need for reevaluation as to whether or not we should change those plans, and that's what we exist to do. So, first off, thank you, okay? So, I wanted to say that, because amending the general plan, if that's what it takes, I think that's what this council should consider to do. So, I'll try to go as quickly as I can. I think when I look at the south, the Carroll Way that goes all the way through, when I look at those two options, the community that I'd rather live in is the one with the loop, right? It just feels safer, it feels more like neighborhood-like. You know, the smaller parks, I think we just maybe need some flexibility, because it feels like to me that some of the issues aren't necessarily one thing in particular, but maybe a combination of those things collectively that are creating some of these discrepancies between us getting a really good plan and the developers having, you know, something that pencils out for them. So, I don't think it's necessarily one specific thing or a win or lose on every single issue that was brought up to us today. I am concerned about the inclusionary housing goal or ordinance. I know that this council has talked about that in the past. I raised the question last time, is the goal to provide affordable housing and workforce housing, whatever terminology it is that you want to use, or to have mixed-income neighborhoods as the goal? I would like council's opinion on that, because I know we're getting ready to talk about it, but we're supposed to give you direction. For me, I'm more concerned about setting, you know, making it affordable, but not to where we have to come up with some magic formula to figure out who gets to live in these affordable homes and then have them locked. I think Councilmember Ritchie explained that really, really well. So, I'm a little concerned that that's already kind of being used as a negotiation tactic, like I don't want that involved at all. I fundamentally disagree with that as being something that we should do moving forward for this. My council may disagree, that's totally fine. I am, let's see, the other one, we talked about the A and P property.
So, the parks, Carroll Way, and any opinion?
Yes, so, the parks, I think what we need is flexibility, right? So, if, I think that what we should do is maybe bring something back so we can change the policy that allows us to do like two to six, or something that provides that flexibility and even the overlap that was discussed before. I don't have an issue if there are two developers with bordering properties that want to overlap a park to make it more functional, I think that's totally fine. I'm also not against, like, I don't want to say for all of them, but like, an HOA or a private park, right? I think that if some of these parks are niche, I mean, we've had developments that have come in that are specifically geared for elder populations, right? So, I'm okay with some of these things having, being funded and maintained through an HOA, that's not to say I want all of them, like I do think a larger park that allows for field and kids to play and stuff is, but I don't think that all of them have to be that way, so again, I just think flexibility. The future green space Carroll Way buffer zone, I understand what we're trying to do, it makes sense, but I also think, like, let's see if we can work that one out, right? I mean, if we, I don't want that to be like a 1992, we're going to put Vacavalle over the hill issue, where we forced that buffer zone and it just like never happens, right? So, did I hit all of them? Workforce housing, A and P, I think we need to get that inclusionary housing ordinance back to council, like, soon, because it's being talked about. So, if it's being talked about, then it's impacting the negotiations and our ability to move forward. If they're willing to do the six-acre parcel, I'm personally good with that, but I think that that probably requires a different conversation when we bring that stuff back. Did I get them all, Mr. Mayor?
I think so.
Okay, thank you.
10 seconds to go.
I tried my best.
Councilmember Silva.
Yeah, we didn't have opportunities for questions specifically, so I just had a question. I just had a question for Don Burris, our Director of Economic Development, and maybe Tamra, just about any feedback you guys have heard, just based on our numbers we're at with housing needs, particularly for our young, true-level professional, young professionals that are trying to get their careers kicked off. I know we look at our arena numbers, but what are you guys hearing, what are you guys seeing out there from the community?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, Don Burris, Director of Economic Development Services. Councilmember, your question is actually pretty timely. This morning, I was part of an interview with the consultant team from Strategic Economics who's working with ABAG and MTC, excuse me, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission and the Association of Bay Area Cities, excuse me, Bay Area Governments, with their Priority Production Area Program. We already participate in the Priority Development Area Program. This new program is very much geared towards cities looking at what industry clusters they have and how they can grow their economy by growing those, excuse me, growing those clusters. In the interview process this morning, what the consultants did share with me is that Solano County in general, and they're working very specifically in Solano County, this work is also happening like in Contra Costa County and other counties throughout Northern California. What they did share was that we have a youth crisis when it comes to housing. When we look at our numbers of residents and we look at the percentage of youths in various age groups, it's really apparent that in Solano County, a lot of our younger people, recent college graduates, don't live in the county because it's not affordable for them. So, I don't have much more to share other than that's what the consultant shared with us this morning in that interview process, that missing middle or attainable housing or workforce housing is what's missing within our county. I don't know if Tamra has more to share, but that's what I learned this morning.
How does that impact, how does that impact our ability to foster economic development in our city and county?
It is a question that companies ask, I think I might have mentioned in previous council meetings, that years ago, companies located in communities simply because they were affordable or cheap, cheap labor, cheap land, cheap facilities. That is no longer the case. Normally, when companies tour through our county now, one of the first questions usually is either about education, or do you have housing for our workforce?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tamra?
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to add a little bit to this conversation. I don't have specific information about what those that are in the, considered in the workforce housing income demographic say what they need. What I can add is that generally, in the affordable housing world, workforce housing is housing that's affordable to those that are earning anywhere between 100 and 120% of area median income. So, when you think about workforce housing or housing that's affordable to the workforce, there is still an affordability and an income limit to that housing. What we have found, at least in looking at feasibility of our down payment assistance programs and funds, is that anywhere between 80 and 100% of area median income limits, there's a discrepancy between what's available, the average home prices, about 550,000 here in Vacaville, and what a family earning at that 80 to 100, up to 120% income level can pay towards a mortgage, so that gap there. If there's not an income limit or a limit placed on even homeownership housing, you still might have difficulty with those that you're trying to target when you talk about workers' housing, being able to afford homes at that price.
All right, thank you, thank you both for your input. So, and then to address the different feedback, I think, like, for me, the number one priority is how do we make sure that there is some type of level of attainable housing for residents, particularly a demographic that I think we've seen from different data points, particularly under Solano County, that we're losing. You know, it was specifically mentioned, folks in biotech. Most of the folks, when I worked in, when it was Genentech, many of those folks could not afford to live here, and those were middle-aged folks as well, and so they're living outside of Vacaville. Airmen, that's a whole different situation. And there, one of the apartments that we recently completed, is it true, I don't know if someone can answer, is it true that the number of veterans that required to live there have been reduced? Is that true? Just want to make sure I'm got accurate.
It's not the number of veterans that are there to be reduced, it was the number of vouchers that were allocated explicitly for veterans was defined, and then the project proponent was going to be advertising heavily to the Air Force Base to try and attract potential airmen to be.
Or those vouchers stayed, remained the same from when it came to council?
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you for clarifying that one, because I think a lot of times we see things that, hey, we approve these plans, yes, things do change, but I think one of the things about suggesting a 10%, and I think the consultant, I forget the word, it was like 14, 15 or something, I think 14%, but suggested a 10% for inclusionary zoning was something that was more comfortable. I think if, in my mind, if there's some, what I would like to see is that conversation continue to happen, because there are developments, but if some aren't working, I need to see the data, I need to see the situation of why that's not working, because when I go to different communities throughout Northern California and other states, there's some phenomenal developments going on that are new, phenomenal, for families, for people of all ages. So, I'd like to see those conversations continue. Our teachers, we are losing teachers in our community. We're concerned about the quality, yes, if we're concerned about the quality of our community, and we're concerned about the future, we need educators to be able to invest in our community, to stop that high turnover, to be able to develop our youth, and for them to develop their practice of teaching much more effectively. So, for me, that's the number one thing. As far as everything else, everything else I feel can be negotiable around a set number of how do we make sure that we have truly attainable housing, both maybe rental and/or ownership.
All right. Vice Mayor Chapman.
Thank you. I'm not going to make many of the developers happy this evening. I would like us to adhere to the general plan policies and standards as it pertains to the parks. I would like to, again, we're finding, or some of my reading, we have more people spending more time out of doors, taking advantage of walking, you see more people walking, they're animals today. There are older individuals who are playing pickleball, I want to get out there one day. However, the theme parks are good, but I think it should be mixed. I still support the park, I'm sorry. And then, as far as the housing, I'm steadfast, but I'm able to listen and be able to accept mixed housing. Inclusionary housing, I would love to see that. However, we're, this project, this area, we're just pushing it further down the road, you know, we need to start making some decisions, and I'm hoping, Mayor, that before we finish this agenda item, that we actually give staff direction on how we feel on each one of these. What do you think? I know there's others.
As far as, did you have any other direction?
Oh, the Carroll Way.
Yeah, Carroll Way, the parks, you spoke about the inclusionary, and did you have a comment on the corridor? So, I think what we're trying to do is each, give this direction, so.
Yes.
The majority, you know, the kind of feedback that you can take, so you have clear directions. So, did you have?
Yes, on Carroll Way, I did look at the design, and it does make sense, I'm sorry, to go around the prop, I like option B. And I think safety is an issue with that, with option A, and option B just looks like it's the way to go, that's unfinished.
All right. Did you have any opinion on the corridor and Lockpatten?
Which one?
The corridor to Lockpatten, right here. The alignment of Carroll Way.
Oh.
Again, it's a placeholder for the future.
For the future, I have no, I have no opinion on that.
Okay, that's fine. Councilmember Fremont?
Well, to start off, we'll leave that slide right there. I'm not in favor of going into Lockpatten like that, I'd rather see us go further to the east, and I just think in the long run it would be cheaper, but that's the least of, so, my opinion would be on that, would be option B on Carroll Way. But, you know, I'm looking back on one of these, it says, in regard to Van and Meadows Park, the development agreements executed with all three landlords gave the option gave the option to either pay the park development, which they construct the neighborhood park and receive the park DIF credit, all three landlords or subsequent builders that collected to pay the park DIF instead of building the neighborhood park. So the fees were collected, and we didn't do anything to build those parks. But before I say, I just want to say, you guys do a great job. Aaron, you know, you always knock it out of the park, and I know that you're hardest for the city, and I know that you guys, you know, really put a lot of effort and work into this, and I appreciate you guys very much. I, I'm a little bit confused, because I remember when we were talking about inclusionary housing back a couple of months ago, we said, well, wait a minute, let's not go to level two, let's go to, our city manager said, let's go to one and a half. And so we voted that night, not to go to two, but to go to one and a half, even though it ended up at two, right? So it was a little bit hard to get your brain wrapped around that one, but I think that, for myself, I would like to see us revisit the inclusionary housing, because I think that it puts the cost of inclusionary housing for the rest of the people that are moving in, that puts the burden on them. And I'm not in favor of inclusionary housing, I just think that it affects the cost of living for everybody else that wants to try to be able to afford to live in that house. It's the difference of whether it's $200 a month or $300 a month more, somebody's going to have to eat that. So I would really like to see us revisit the inclusionary housing again, because I feel like we went, we were supposed to go to one and a half, and we went to two. So I know that's something that we've already voted on, but I think that I would, personally, I'd like to have some more conversation on that. I would also like to see the city council direct staff to amend the general plan and Parks and Recreation Master Plan to allow for smaller parks for a couple of reasons. Water is a big issue, you know, and if we're going to build big parks with big grass areas, with fertilizer and sprinkler systems, and all the considerations that go behind that, I'm, I'm just open to the idea of smaller theme parks where, you know, you've got some pickleball, you've got more concrete and less maintenance, perhaps, you know? I know I like grass in my neighborhood park, but we also like pickleball. I mean, they just put a basketball court in my neighborhood park, which a lot of people were upset about, but I can tell you, I've got a bunch of kids that come over to my house from Vacahai just about daily, and they're really excited about having a basketball court, you know, down the street, that they don't have to go, what, 12 blocks, 10, 12 blocks away over to Orchard to, you know, to play there. So I like the idea of maybe diversifying some of our parks and providing some of these other things that other people like to do. Not everybody has a dog that they want to walk, not everybody has grass that they want to walk around. Some people just want a, a back, a pathway around a park to be able to walk on, so I think it's really worth looking at maintenance, what it costs to maintain these parks, and think, so my, 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 my thing is that I think that we should really take a look at the master plan, take, take another look at inclusionary housing and find out, you know, really if that's affordable for us or not, because I think that that puts the burden on people that want to move in there. Still taking a look at making these more affordable, I mean, you know, making affordable housing through making good choices and not putting a burden of 10% on, I think that's, that's way out of line, you know? And these parks, you know, we're talking about adding our fees onto parks right now. I, I could be wrong on my numbers, but I think that it's somewhere between adding, like, perhaps another $30,000 on, on our development fees for, for future parks. Well, here's a way to knock some of those numbers back down, in my opinion. You guys have, excuse me, I'm not super educated in all these areas, you know, I'm just speaking off of the cuff, but I think that that's a way to maybe start reducing some of the costs of these parks, on how, on the cost to build them, put sprinklers in them, maintain them, unload lawn mowers, weed eaters, blowers, all that kind of stuff. So that's my vote for that, and that, the...
I think there's, there's one other area in the, the children parcel, and that is the, the Carrollway throughput.
Yeah, the Carrollway throughput.
Except on the...
Yeah, that's what I meant earlier when I was talking about option B. I'm in favor of option B, just because I think, knowing that I live up off of North Alamo, and the speed limit's 25 miles an hour, and everybody's doing 45 to 60 down that street on a pretty regular basis, I mean, pretty much daily, and we're going to get the same thing happening over here, and I agree with Councilman Ritchie, that it's, it just adds a new level of danger to, and, and people are going to use it for a bypass to get over to Kill Kenny Road, you know, so, yeah, I'm not in favor of a, that's, that's me.
I'm going to call on Councilmember Wiley, even though your light's not on.
Thank you. Do I need to push the button then?
No, I, I will push it.
I was expecting to come down the road, so thank you. All right, thanks for the information. I will address the key points, but I want to say that, you know, our decision tonight is a very important decision, because we made the decision to open up the urban reserve, and we didn't open it up to have more of everything that we've always had. We wanted to be very clear, we wanted something that was best for Vacaville in the long run. And the other thing, we are kind of second guessing, how did we get where we were in the walk? How did they make that decision? Why didn't they make that decision years ago? So in 20 years from now, are people going to be looking at our council and say, why did they make that decision? Why didn't they do this? How could they have not thought ahead? So it is really an important decision, and I don't know all the answers, but I want to do what's best for Vacaville now and the Vacaville in the future. So I think that it's really a big, important decision. So I will say that in this past weekend, we had a big event in Magnolia Park, thanks to Ms. Joan and our South Town Collaborative Neighborhood Association, and it was wonderful because there were so many people, and this event was for family fun, and there were kids all the time, not just from the area, but from all over Vacaville. Because I asked them, do you live here? No, I live by Beelard. No, I live by Alamo Park. No, I live here. So other people do come to the parks, not just the neighborhood. We had our event here, there were people playing basketball, all the shelter houses were full of people having other parties. The Marines were in the open space doing these, I don't know what the Marines were doing, but they were in the park too. So it was the neighborhood park fully utilized, and everyone talked about Vacaville and their great parks. So I don't want to think, well, these parks are just for this neighborhood, so I support keeping with our general plan, parks plan. I do like their plan about sharing the space and having maybe pickleball here, and, you know, barbecue and family thing here, but I do feel like, I've been to that little pocket park in, in South Town, and it's not very useful. So I support parks, that's number one. Number two, looking at lock pad, I think we should do the buffer area, because maybe in 20 years, they want to extend the road, and I don't think that we should close that option just because we think lock pad now doesn't want, and it doesn't cost anything more to make a buffer zone. So that's that thing. And then the, the road illustration really has, is a big decision too. And when I initially look at it, I immediately go to B, because it makes more sense, you're not going to have a throughway, and, and then people would be going slower, because I can see them going from Fry Road to Leisure Town, and Leisure Town up there, and then eventually Carrollway as well. Because I live in that area, and I know how people drive on Leisure Town Road. But we do have, Jackson Road was like that, really a lot of people going through on Jackson Road until Foxborough Parkway went through. Now there's a lot of people on Foxborough Parkway. My house is right there, I hear them go too fast, I get calls from everyone, but probably it's safer than having them wind through the neighborhood, because the issue with the option B, they're going to be going fast, and people are going to think, oh, I'm safe because it's right in front of my house, and they're supposed to go slow. So I'm, I'm going to say I'm for option A, even though I was initially going for option B, because that's Redstone Parkway, that's Foxborough Parkway, that's Jackson Road, and I think that's just going to be the road between the two, and it's for vehicle miles traveled, and it's for efficiency, and it's also to keep the park together. So, and inclusionary housing, this is the big thing. This is the time to do it. If we don't do it now, when we opened up the urban reserve, it wasn't part of it, but was, the guiding principle says, an integrated neighborhood of mixed affordability, and it didn't say 10%, so I, I understand why there might have been some concern, and I'm not saying it has to be 10%, but I, I do not want to let go of that at this time, because it is so important. And that also ties into the park. If we have smaller homes on smaller lots, people want to be outside, and they need to be able to have parks to enjoy them.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll wrap the comments up as succinct as I can. I believe the park minimum standards are great, city staff has done an excellent job over the years to allow development to conform, but the truth is, my desire was really to see builders build turnkey parks, right? And so ultimately, that's what we want. We want meeting places, and whether we call them themed or not, some, that can be up to, up to interpretation. It is a neighborhood park, it's not a, it's not designed to be a park where all the sports is taking place, it's supposed to be for the neighborhoods. But when there's six acres, we program them like they're city parks, and the truth is, is I have to get in a car and drive out of a neighborhood to get to a neighborhood park. I would love to have a two-acre park. I'd love to have a place to stop. And so part of the challenge, as I see it, is if we're trying to create neighborhoods that are, there's, they're more densely populated, different housing types, we need to give development some creativity. I remember early on, I said, be creative, surprise us. And if everything looks the same, there's no creativity, and there's, there's clearly nothing different. And I think everyone has good intentions on this, from staff and from development, but I'm interested and curious on how we could actually have something that's exciting for that young workforce, for the, the, the youth that are saying, I have nowhere to live, I don't want a big house. I, I really need just 1,100 square foot, I need the Portofinos, I need the, I need the different kinds of housing that says, I like that. And if they're more, if there's more of them, and they're more affordable, we begin to start solving some of our workforce attainable, missing middle, you pick the acronym, housing, there's other ways to address, you know, income issues, but part of the drivers isn't all about deed restriction. We have programs for that, but to create that does put the burden on the rest of the development. And so we can have differing opinions, but at the same time, I think most of us would agree, how do we help those who can't afford it? Part of it is, is raising the ability for people to have livable and earn, you know, earning wages, but at the same time, have more of those housing types, so we don't have enough stock in what we're doing, and so that becomes the number one goal, is to get the housing stock for all those creep types. And so, you know, that's some of the answers on the inclusionary housing. I just think that it's the, it's the, where's the incentive to actually get what we want? I believe what we want is more of those types, and we have to zone properly, and we have to incentivize those, and a policy disincentivizes the very thing that I think that we're all wanting. Carrollway, the, as far as the corridor, I've seen too many terminus corridors around town in my career, they're everywhere, and they, they, they don't get built. They mean well, but it also is a tension point within the neighborhood, and then later on, the tension is, is, well, we don't want that to go through. I like the idea of identifying the developments that are personable, and sometimes they're segmented in ways that create that connection and cohesiveness, and so I don't believe that we need to do that, because that puts the burden on developers, simply for the future. I get it. Could it be annexed in the future? Yes, but I also believe that we've heard passionately from the lock pad community that they really don't want that, and so that just becomes that, that feeling over them, that you're just going to do what you always do, and you're going to annex us. The other, I think, in the, the children property, if you could go to that on the, if it's up there, option B for me, my years of experience tells me, option A, you, you build it, the shortcut just becomes the, the throughput traffic, and so you inadvertently take a collector and you turn it into a sub arterial. It's just the way traffic works. Anyone, it's, in my profession, you get speed, it's not designed for it. I understand it meets the criteria of BMT. The reality is, is when you're this far away from a freeway, and everyone has a car, BMT becomes a state issue in high-dense areas, and it doesn't work in all of our residential areas. I think that what you get in this particular design is, is I see walkability, I see paseos, I see smaller meeting points where people don't have to walk three-quarters of a mile to a park. And so if it means being flexible, find ways to be flexible. Is two acres the minimum? Probably is the minimum, but again, play for all, minus the parking lots, two and a half, and so maybe there's a happy medium in there somewhere. But I really don't believe that, you know, that option B creates harm, even if there was busing to go through there. It just, it's, I think it's safer, and it creates a more lived experience on Carrollway South. And, Carrollway, I think, and then, lastly, is I appreciate staffing to us, because we need to get through this, because some of this is policy-driven, and, you know, obviously, part of what staff is doing is policy compliance. And here tonight, I hope that this was an exercise. We're not all the same in how this plays out, we don't, we haven't answered all the policies, but I would support coming back with amended policy, especially in the parks. Again, I don't even have a park that I can, I can walk a mile loop, and I only come across a park. So I like the idea of smaller, more intimate neighborhoods, and being creative. And I know that there is a couple more comments. Vice Mayor Chapman?
Thank you. You brought to mind something. On that slide, option B, it's what I said I supported. I was supporting the routing of the road around, not the small parts.
Okay, right.
Okay, I just needed to clarify that.
Yeah, that's right, because you, you wanted to keep the policy on the parks, but you, but you're okay with the routing of B?
Yes.
Yeah. And Councilmember Stockton?
Yes, I appreciate everybody's comments, and I agree that there is a need for clarity. I think only with clarity can we really give everyone involved realistic expectations about how we're going to move forward. So I guess my question is, I know that we're just making a recommendation today, but, I mean, do we just, like, show a hands on each of these issues, so that we give very clear direction to them on what to include or not include moving forward with? Because I feel like it's pretty ambiguous, and I can see why there's a need for clarity, because there are almost polar opposing views on some of these issues. And so how do we provide a recommendation today to staff, so that they can work with the development community and, and create those, that clarity and realistic expectations on how to move forward? Because I feel like the stuff needs to come back to be codified for further conversation, but...
So, and maybe the, the way to do this is, is have staff, I mean, from your perspective, have, have you received enough input based upon council's direction tonight? What, what have you heard? Because I, I have some notes...
Your recommendation.
Right, I see, that's, that's staff's recommendation, but what we're getting is, is council's input tonight.
And, and what I've tracked so far is that the majority of council would like to see flexibility in the parks. The majority of council prefers option B on both of the plans, and the majority of council with regards, regards to inclusionary housing would like us to focus on, how do we get more missing middle to its that?
Repeat that.
Instead of having a specific percentage that has to be dedicated, focus more on trying to get missing middle housing, workforce housing, workforce housing.
That's what I, my note, so that's consistent. Thank, thank you for that, that's exactly what I wanted to make sure we had.
And that's the direction that we...
Yes, you can. Councilmember Stockton?
So is that, does that lead to a certain percentage in your guys' perception of housing?
I, I think that's something that we will be, be able to work with, the developer team on, is to figure out, because there is a portion that the Donaldson is committed to, which is six acres, but there is still much more work to do on the draft land use plan that would identify where you're expecting to see some of that missing middle housing throughout the land use plan. And that's probably where it's all going to come together, how much of the land use plan is going to show those specific zonings or, or general plan densities that would lend themselves to more of the missing middle housing. So what we're hearing is, instead of focusing on a percentage for affordable housing, get more of that missing middle housing that is more attainable.
Does that mean no affordable housing?
Well, as I mentioned, the Donaldson property is committed at least to the six-acre site with a... within the property.
And I'm, I'm going to answer the question a little bit differently. The majority of the council did not support imposing an inclusionary housing requirement. I did hear pretty much every council member say that one of the biggest concerns is burdening future homeowners, who are the market rate homeowners. And so something staff can take from this conversation is to talk to developers, I'd like to, about what, what would it take to do some affordable units in a way that, in a manner that would not affect those, um, new homeowners? And that's something that is actually part of the work we're doing on the inclusionary housing ordinance in a separate little silo is looking very much at that issue of homeownership inclusionary. But again, we heard the majority loud and clear.
Okay.
But isn't, aren't all, sorry, I'm speaking out loud now. But isn't all cost passed on to the homeowners regardless?
Um, all the costs of, all the costs of, yes, I mean, yes, they, that's.
And so I mean, sorry, sorry guys, and I'll shut up after this, but I, I just, I have this thing in my mind, like where we value parks, right? So we're willing to, to take on that cost as a homeowner's for a park, but we're not willing to take on, on, uh, some type of additional cost if that's, you know, what clearly is being saying, the developers aren't going to take the hit, they're going to pass that cost on. So we're willing to take that, we, we value parks, but we don't value people, working class, entry level people, uh, and making sure that we actually have facilities, the spaces that are in, that are, that are ingrained in there, that, that we make sure they're built to be accessible. This is my comment.
I, I appreciate what you're saying. To clarify, my position is, is instead of having, you know, focusing on an inclusionary policy, I would rather the direction be work with the developers to create more housing types that are the workforce, that is the 1,100 square foot. I lived with, you know, married with two children in, in just around 11, you know, almost under 1,200 square foot for years. We need more of that. And so how can we incentivize the Portofinos that, that are intimate so that it is more affordable, but it's not necessarily doing it through an inclusionary policy? It's doing it because we're increasing the volume of the things that we do not have. And that's what I want to focus on. And so I don't disagree and I don't want, I don't mean to say it in a way that somehow, you know, the park's important, but the people are not, just the opposite. It's just the process of how I feel that we can get there and I respect your opinion. And I think, uh, Councilmember Ritchie.
I'll probably, super fast. Something actually, when, when Councilman Silva called up Tamra and Don and, uh, the comments, actually those last comments, comments before what Mayor Carly said, it really touched me. So I just did the quick math. It's attainable. The, the number as of last month in America for people buying houses at 55 years old is the average purchaser. It's moved so far away from affordability, it's crazy. That risk of the 780 dollar houses is very scary. But I did the math. Slanta County, the AMI 80% number at what mayor's talking about, 1,100, and I use 5,800. We can do it. You will qualify for a house at $412,000 at 1,700 square feet at 80% of this. Slanta County AMI, I did the math, the 7.5% 30 year fix with 3.5% down. It could build a trust fund in lieu of money. They could put money to help with the down payment of 3.5% is $14,000 for certain houses. After that then moves refinances, it goes back into the till. You can make this happen. I do this every day in my other job. It's available, it's possible. We need to find ways to have people understand they can afford Vacaville, the new jobs are coming here. It can happen at 80% AMI in our city if we just do exactly what Mayor said. 1,100 square feet to 500 square feet, put them in a beautiful community where they are in, around other people, they can walk to parks, walk to fund. That's what they need. Like we can do it. And like, I mean, put me in the room with these developers and I won't come out until I'm, like I'm telling you, like we won't need to force an AM inclusionary housing on them. Like we can make them get it done. Like they, capitalism, like water's going to flow and they'll find a way. They want to make money in the city, we'll get it done. And, and that's my point.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Fremont.
Yeah, um, I, I would like to just, uh, on top of what Councilman Silva had to say about parks of people, I, I completely agree with that. I mean, and that's why I made the comments that I did about smaller parks or, you know, I, and I remember a while back, I was listening to or reading something, I can't remember, but it was the young professionals that are coming up, they're trying to get their foot in the door and get out on their own and move out of their parents' basements and bedrooms and all this type of thing. They don't care much about parks. They, they want to live in a, you know, a three or four or five story unit. It's got a weight room in it, it's got a couple of pools, it's got, you know, a place to play pool, they want to have some entertainment and, you know, and, and if we're building those types of places and we're building a lot of them, then that's going to bring the price down, in my opinion, and make it a place where the workforce up and coming, new generations want to live. They want to live close to public transportation. A lot of them don't even want to have a vehicle anymore because the cost and the burden of that is so expensive. So, you know, again, you know, uh, we're not too far for L tracks out there, you know, and I'm just thinking way into the future, but these are, I think what is important to people is not, to the younger generation is not to have a park. A lot of people just want a place to take their dogs where their dogs can poop, right? I mean, really, you know, that's, that's what a lot of people use the parks for. But I think a lot of this younger generation is more interested in having a place that they can call their own than they are envision a neighborhood park that adds 30, $40,000 onto the cost of, of, uh, of a building permit, you know? So that's, I just wanted to jump in on that.
And, uh, last comment on this, I think goes to Councilmember Wiley.
I am glad that we've kind of had this discussion to see how it was perceived of our comments because I hope that the last hour doesn't mean we're just going to be in the same place where we started. I mean, when you say flexibility of parks, are we saying, well, their parks look fine now because they're flexible? Or do we have any other thing with flexibility of parks? And did we also just kick in, now we have to do a general plan amendment to parks, which means that's going to add a lot to the timeline? Because if we're saying they're going to be flexible, then we have to do a general plan amendment, which takes time. And then our next item is diff. So I think we're going to hear, we can't build these because your fees are too high and we just can't possibly build these. So I don't want to end up the same place started at 10, nine o'clock. That's my comments. I don't want to hear, can't build it.
I appreciate it. I think that they should build it, so. Yeah, what we're going to do now is we're going to take a break. Appreciate that. Have, have you received everything? And just work with the developers? And we'll go back to, let's be creative. Let's, let's accomplish what it is that we, we know that we all want together. Everyone's opinion on this council is important and I appreciate it. So thank you. We're going to stand in recess for tenants.
It will make on for a ride. But at the end of time, I will be on your side. Please don't go too far. Please don't go too far. If you want to travel miles, take your dreams and strive hard time. I will be here for advice while you get into the wild. Please don't go too far. And if you want to leave this world and just leave my heart alone in the dark.
All right, we're going to go ahead and get this meeting started once again, and we're going to step into the next business item, I believe it's item B.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This next item is informational item and introduction to development impact fees. We've got Brian McLean, Public Works Director, Gwen Owen, Special Project Coordinator, and Erin Moore, presentation.
Terrific, thank you, Georgianne. I'll skip the introductions, but I, my right hand here with Gwen coming back and being our Special Project Coordinator on this, a big shout out, so. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Council Members. Yep, tonight is the first of two informational presentations on development impact fees. This presentation tonight was going to focus on the basics and the fundamentals of development impact fee programs. And with that, okay, go on. Presentation overview, we're going to go over DIF introduction, the role of city council within the DIF, you know, what's a NEXUS study, a little bit about fee calculation and capital projects, some DIF history, DIF model reporting and accounting, and an overview of next steps. So what is a development impact fee? Well, put simply, a DIF fee is a tool in the funding toolkit for growing cities. With a reduction in state funding, many cities desire new development to pay their own way. In other words, to support the proportional impact of that new development so that it is not a burden on a city's services and/or infrastructure. There are various DIF categories, they're all separate and unique, and earlier this evening, we went through the LLMD, and if you recall, there were very similar categories as you see here, parks and recreation, fire, police, transportation, general facilities, et cetera. Each DIF category has its own project list. Each DIF category has its own computation as to the DIF fee. It's important. As it relates to the Fee Mitigation Act, the California Fee Mitigation Act provides strict rules and guidelines concerning DIF programs. DIF fees are to be levied on one-time fees charged on new development to mitigate, again, the impact of, the proportional impact of that particular development on the city's infrastructure or services. It cannot be used for fixing existing deficiencies, can't be used for operating and maintenance. But it's a balancing act. The benefits provided through the infrastructure improvements relative to DIF fees are balanced with the cost of those fees in relation to actually producing a private development project. Sometimes those fees can be so high as to make that project infeasible, and so it is a balancing act between the benefits that the fees bring in that infrastructure and those improvements, and the impact on development. Real quick, some examples of projects completed with DIF funding. Again, this is not 100% DIF funding, it's just one of the sources of funding for these projects. Go back, this is the Pleasant Valley Detention Basin, recall that back in December of last year, we provided you a screenshot of this. Here are two parks, Corderos and Alpatch Park. Jepson Parkway, you know, we're doing construction on Phase Two right now, and we, obviously, Phase One was completed in 2019, and DIF fees were associated with that. Several of you were at the opening ceremony for the Public Works Administration Building that was completed with some DIF fee funding. Major road crossing projects, Leisure Town Road on the left and Allison Drive on the right. Development impact fees are adopted by city council. This is your role, this is quintessential to your role. We follow, staff follows your footsteps in following those policies that you set in place, either by the adoption of policies and standards, general plan, for example, master plans, service standards, strategic plans. The, also, we follow your lead in terms of council's consideration and adoption of capital improvement programs. And finally, the review and development of impact fees through NEXUS study processes look like the process we're in right now. Those are all part and parcel of council's role in evaluating DIF programs and those DIF fees. Using a transportation project as an example, this slide illustrates the intersection of actions for consideration which come before city council relative to the DIF. I'm using a transportation project in this slide. At the very top, you'll see that there's the general plan and the transportation element that city council approved going back to 2015. Later, there are studies that are performed by staff and our consultants, service level policies that are, have been adopted through the general plan are applied by city staff. City staff are going through the process right now and evaluating the transportation DIF and those programs, creating a project list of those lists of particular projects within that transportation DIF category, creating the cost estimates, et cetera, that feed into, again, this process which we're in right now, which is the DIF update and adoption process. Council approves also our CIP projects, our CIP budget, annual budget, as well as the city budget, and as soon as we're done with this presentation, the Director of Finance will be providing you that information on the city's budget as well as the CIP budgets. Council adopts those items. Later in the year, as we go through, there is adoption of updates to the CIP project. The city may gain grant funding, for example, or add an additional project to the CIP. Those all come back to the city council for consideration of approval and acceptance. City staff go through the process of project planning, design, and delivery. Every year, city council receives in December the annual DIF report, every year. And we'll go into a little bit more about that later on. And then finally, one of the most present items that city council sees is our contracting efforts related to capital projects. Before city council, we bring basically contracting, contracts, for example, Jepson Parkway, with a, you know, the developer, or excuse me, the contractor, contract come in, that comes before city council with the bid package that council ultimately approves and considers for approval. And then later, after that, public infrastructure is completed, those items come back to city council again for acceptance of public improvement. So those are all touchpoints where council has input and relation to the DIF program. We're going to get into DIF history now, DIF model and administration accounting, and with that, I'm going to hand it over to Gwen.
Good evening. Vacaville established its first comprehensive development impact fee in 1992. That program covered a wide range of facilities impacted by new development. Over the years, the city has grown and planning, the planning framework has evolved. The DIF program has also been updated to reflect new infrastructure needs and policy goals. Next slide. In 2015, the city adopted a new general plan, which emphasized the new development, that new development should pay their own way. This principle is critical in ensuring that development doesn't financially burden the city or compromise levels of service. This general plan update laid the groundwork for a more refined and equitable approach to impact fees. Following the 2015 general plan, we initiated a new NEXUS study in 2022, which assessed the infrastructure needs tied to growth. A major update in the study was the introduction of a tiered single-family housing fee based upon the unit size, which better aligned fee levels with the appropriate impacts of different sized homes. The 2025 refinement builds on the 2022 study. It updates project costs and current, with the most recent data, and brings the program into compliance with AB 602, which requires that fees for housing be based upon square footage of a unit. This makes this program more legally defensible and tailored to today's housing landscape and policies.
In terms of DIF model, the revenues, those DIF revenue fees that the city collects and are identified through the NEXUS study, the city uses what is called the pay-as-you-go model. Under that pay-as-you-go model, fees are paid under those DIF categories to which a new project is impacting. If you look at the, in this slide, in the upper left, you can see the flow of tax as they move down and across, and that's where I'm going to walk you through this. Project comes in and the project touches various elements of DIF categories. It touches storm drainage, it touches transportation, open space, and parks. Project pays their fees for those particular impacts. Those fees are then essentially transferred into the various fund accounts for those specific type of categories of those DIF categories. In this example, we're going to continue to focus on the transportation piece, so it's a transportation impact fee. As it moves through the process and goes from the master fund account for the transportation fund, there's a prioritization process that happens, and that prioritization process is focused on the strategic alignment with city council goals, again, general plan, specific plans, policy plans that are considered and approved by city council, strategic plans that are considered and approved by city council. Risk and complexity is evaluated for the project, as well as resource availability, as well as, finally, project cost and project balance. And what I'm trying to demonstrate at the bottom of this slide is, there's not a project 1, 2, 3, 4, not sequentially, all coming in. There's a prioritization process based on those particular items in that I've just listed, that shifts these projects around to allow those projects to move forward. I've used this example in the past, for example, Jepson Parkway. One of the, one of the impetuses of Jepson Parkway was the development east of Leisure Town. That was a goal the city council had, was to produce more of that housing and start to develop east of Leisure Town area. You have to have a backbone infrastructure and a roadway network so that you can start to branch off of that into those subdivision and developments, and so a lot of that was driven and forced Jepson Parkway to come to the forefront. This process, this pay-as-you-go model, allows the city to be able to respond in those timely ways, to be able to implement those big projects. Again, as I mentioned, the pay-as-you-go model is the industry standard, is used by most municipalities, and I, on this slide here at the very bottom, these are just example municipalities. Again, it's utilized as a predominant model throughout the, any of the cities that, you know, cities that are utilizing a DIF program. You can see the City of Fairfield's in here, Vallejo and Dixon, and various other municipalities. In terms of DIF accounting, the California Fee Mitigation Act specifically defines the reporting requirements for agencies operating a DIF program. There are two levels of reporting, annual reporting and fifth-year reporting. The City of Vacaville produces an annual report based on that fifth-year higher requirement, and so what the city is looking for in terms of the production of that annual report, again, which you see every year, comes to you for consideration, is there's a segregation of all of the DIF fee categories, they're all accounted for separately, current balances for every single one of those DIF categories, the amount of fees that were collected in each of those categories, down to the project level identification and accounting for every single project, which had any, any dollar spent related to those DIF fees on those particular projects. And again, this all comes to you at that fifth level, higher level of reporting pursuant to the state of California. Now we're going to talk about NEXUS study, fee calculations, and capital projects.
Okay, this slide highlights the legal and technical foundations behind the development impact fees. The draft 2025 NEXUS study is our primary supporting document. It includes all the assumptions, calculations, and justifications needed to comply with the Mitigation Fee Act. To be legally defensible, any fee must propose, must propose, propose, sorry, must demonstrate a clear connection or nexus between the development project and the public facility or infrastructure that the fee will help fund. That is why the study ties fees directly to the city's general plan, service levels, capital improvement plans, and cost estimate. It also ensures that each fee is proportional, meaning that a development only pays its fair share of improvements needed to serve it. We can't overcharge, but we can't undercharge, or we risk not being able to deliver the necessary infrastructure. Next slide. Now, this slide looks at how fees are actually calculated. Most development impact fees follow a consistent network. First, we identify which capital improvement projects are needed to serve the future growth. Then we estimate the cost of the projects. After that, we determine how much of those costs are attributed to new development. This is critical because existing residents shouldn't pay for infrastructure required by new, by new growth. Finally, we calculate a per-unit or per-square-footage fee that would recover growth-related costs. This gives us the maximum justifiable fee. These inputs allow us to build a fee structure that is equitable, legal, defensible, and financially sound. This slide explains how the city identifies capital projects that are included in the development impact fee. The process follows a structured five-step approach that's grounded in state law and local policy. First, we review adopted plans, like the general plan, specific plans, and master plans, to identify long-term capital needs. Next, we make sure the identified projects are consistent with our existing planned level of service. This ensures that new development pays the, pays for the infrastructure needed to maintain service standards, not to upgrade or improve them beyond what the city has planned. Third, we assess how growth is driving demand. We only include projects in the DIF if there's a clear connection between population or job growth and the need for those facilities. Fourth, we confirm that each project qualifies as a capital improvement under state law. DIF can only fund capital, not operating or maintenance costs. And finally, we ensure alignment with city council adopted policies and directions. This process keeps our fees both legally, legally compliant and aligned with the city's
In terms of next steps, we have a couple more public outreach meetings available to the public, as well as our community or our development partners. These will be held on July 15th and August 25th. And then city council meetings coming up, July 22nd, we'll be talking about development impact fees 102. We're going to move beyond the basics and fundamentals and start to get into the intermediate and the advanced level DIF. My, it's my hope that this, these two educational My, it's, it's my hope that this, these two educational courses, informative courses, will help provide the basis for you to be able to really understand the program and nuances within the DIF for upcoming decisions later on in the fall. In August, there will be a DIF Community Facility District CFD Policy Study Session, and from that, we hope to have a very robust discussion of various policy elements related to those, these two particular elements, the DIF and CFDs. What we intend to be able to garner out of those conversations, that study session with council, will then feed into the next piece, which would be coming back to city council sometime, probably in September, with a DIF fee update study session incorporating everything that we've heard along the way, starting in April of this year, from the, from the public, from our development community, from you, as we go through that policy study session. So that finally, in October or so, you'll be presented, staff will present you with a resolution to consider updating the development impact fee. And then finally, in terms of resources related to the DIF, there are a number of resources that we've been compiling, and it's, it's a living, breathing website that we've created. It gets updated very regularly, located on the city's website. It's the community development page, and on that community development page, it's under Forms and Fees, and then there's a big tile that says, "DIF Update 2025." Environmental, fiscal, and strategic goal, there's no impact on the environmental side as a result of this action, there is no fiscal impact. And as far as strategic goal, this particular project touches all five of the city council's adopted strategic goal elements, 1 through 5. Recommendation, there's no, no required action here, this item is for informational purposes. And that concludes our presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention. I don't see any initial questions, and I appreciate that there had been some explanations prior to this, as we're trying to better understand the process, so thank you for that. I'm going to go ahead and open it up to the public, and, and I know that there's developers in the room, if there's any comments that you want to make. This won't be an open-ended, so just try to, try to keep it on point.
First of all, it's been, once again, I'll repeat, it's a very burdensome process, and we're looking at five months to try and get to a conclusion on this. And, once again, and I'm going to repeat myself, and I'll ask the council, what is it that you're looking for? What is your goal in the type of unit you want? If you want workforce housing, that I heard you all talking about, we need to look at all the costs involved and not look in cylinders, and, and fees here, and parks here, and that. We need to look at the whole project. So what does that bring me to? That, first of all, brings me, and I'll get to the fees in just a second, I don't know why this city does not have a housing element, can't even talk, element advocate. In other words, you, we don't have anybody within the city that we can go, that is working, that's a staff member, to try and see to it that these homes that you're looking for are attainable, and are buildable, and then are attainable. Instead, we're being told that we have got to convince you, it's our job. I've been told that that is our job as the developer, to convince you to lower the fees to make it work for the project that you want. That, to me, is totally ass-backwards. But, I wish that you would have somebody that would be an advocate within your city that was on your payroll, that was talking to the different parts of your city, saying, what can we do to get realistic? Vince Bossi, who's not here tonight, had other commitments, but he's been on our behalf, submitting questions and recommendations and everything else regarding fees, and we have gotten out of the 15 or something submitted, we've gotten back two or three very minor ones. We're not getting anywhere. The, they're not working to try and lower the fees. They have, as they have clearly stated, it is the maximum allowable by law. And if we want them lowered, we have to get them lowered ourselves. We have to convince you. So that, does that mean that, that we have to take each one of you and sit you down and go with you, maybe two at a time, over each one of the 64 fees that are there? I was going to bring my cups out, because I did bring them, but I understand that everybody's gone through the, the education of the cups, that's the, the money going in and getting transferred out and into the big ones. So, since I've heard you've already been educated, I'm not going to bring them out. But I am going to try and point out something. New fees are coming in because they need evidently more money, or they need it quicker. I don't understand everything, I'm not the smartest guy in the world. But when I see a cup getting requested to get filled, which has an intersection at Level C, and it takes $2.5 million to improve Level C, and by their own, the staff's own rating, when it is completed, the work is done, it's finished, it's opened up, do you know what the level's going to be? You've got to read your own report, Level C. So, why are we putting in new projects that are going nowhere? There's another one, another intersection.
So I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and just cut you off at this point. Here's the, I appreciate the comment. But what I, what I do hope is, is that our process will, will be able to explain where we get from the maximum allowable, to what is going to be council priorities.
I would like to get to that point. We have not been able to have that discussion. We submit stuff, we're not getting stuff back. We don't have anybody advocating on, on the city's side for the housing. They don't, it's, it's our understanding than the feeling that I'm getting, is that the type of housing has no correlation to the type of expenses and cost that the staff is asking us to incur.
I appreciate that.
So if you can give me somebody that we can talk to, that would help maybe get in between us, it might help out, because we're, we're not doing very good right now, and I know a lot of people are going to be very upset at me for saying these things. And I'm not as eloquent as Todd, who'll probably come in behind me, but the point being, is we want to resolve it, we want to build your product, we want to do it, but we got to look at cost on every level, and we got to get better cooperation than what we're getting.
Thank you.
With that, I'll sit down.
Appreciate it. Anyone else in the public wishing to comment? I see head nods, so we'll leave it at that. Good evening.
I would just like to reiterate, please do not make any changes that do not benefit The developers came to you. This is your gang, let them pay. They're not here out of charity.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate, this is the intro, and hopefully, there will be an opportunity in the sessions to come, because I know that there's been some comments of items that are in our TIF, for example, that maybe the council may want to weigh in at a future session, because I know that that's, sometimes the development community might say, if, if there's a percentage of what is in front of us, may or may not ever be built, and it's time for the council to weigh in, then I'm sure that will come to the council at some point.
Absolutely, Mayor. And just to address Mr. Alexander's comments really quickly, again, as I informed council, we've had multiple meetings with developers, and specifically with Mr. Alexander itself, upwards of two hours of meetings. Terms of, of staff not turning around and providing information, again, I would, I would encourage you to take a look at the, the website. It is rife with information. We are rerunning the numbers, and I, as I mentioned earlier, this is a, an iterative process. We started in April with a draft. It will not be the same thing that we are going to be presenting to council, for the very reason that we are having these public meetings with the developers and taking their comment, and it's moving the needle. We have that July 15th meeting, and I, I hope to be able to settle some of those concerns that Mr. Alexander and others have. But any case, the bottom line is, we have been doing our due diligence. When we come back to council and have those policy discussions, and ultimately provide you the fees, you will be able to make those calls.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Sill.
And thank you for clarifying that, that, and along with those, I'm, I know we've talked privately prior to this meeting, but just to be transparent, I am also interested in seeing what comparable DIF fees are with, within our region, or anything to that effect, just to make sure that we have a full sense of what's going on. Thank you.
Well, appreciated. It's no action tonight, this is the start, so we'll go from here. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item C.
Thank you, Mayor. This last item is adoption of the budget. We've got Ken Messmer, our finance director, and John Collett, budget manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Next slide, please. So just starting off tonight's presentation, adoption of the budget, with just a brief recap of how we got here, and the different meetings that took place getting up to tonight's meeting. And so, in addition to the quarterly budget updates, we had three study sessions. The very first study session was focusing on cost savings measures, really looking at, just given the fact that we were anticipating deficit spending, the cost savings measures that we would be putting in place and recommending in order to shrink our deficit gap in the upcoming fiscal year. Study session number two, we provided an update of where we anticipated the current fiscal year to end, an updated five-year forecast, and really, the, the positive news with the current year was that we are going to receive one-time sales tax money, so a boost from that, and so although that doesn't impact the, the forecast that we have of deficit spending going forward, it does put us in a better position with the reserve going into the next fiscal year. Additionally, in that study session number two, there were two items that were brought up for council consideration, are part of this proposed budget, and that was $300,000 for Fire Academy in February, and then also $150,000 for a city contribution, as us being a member of CAPSALON or JPA. And then, prior to the study session number three on June 10th, the draft budgets were made available, and that evening, we presented a summary of the operating budget, the CIP budget, and then also previewed ways of enhancing our revenues in the upcoming fiscal year that we'll be bringing back for discussion. Next slide. So, just a, an overview of the proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year, and so this is going to be the second fiscal year that the proposed budget is proposing using excess reserves in order to balance the budget, and really, by doing so, it allows us to maintain our service levels and programs for the community, not make any drastic cuts to, to those levels, service levels or programs. As mentioned earlier, this proposed budget, budget also implements cost savings measures to address our deficit spending gap, or kind of narrow that. And then also, really, the key goal being that at the end of the next fiscal year, that we're still above our general fund reserve policy. And so, some of the items that were proposed was a 2.5% cost reduction from every department, pausing a majority of the measure on pilot programs, with the exception of the neighborhood cleanup program, and the youth scholarship program, and then reducing our capital funding, no inflator to the service and supplies budgets for CPI, and then no full, no new full-time staffing or positions being proposed, and in fact, we're actually freezing three positions, and then 22 positions were identified as part of the cost savings measures to be held, or kind of delayed for hiring. Next slide. So this is the proposed budget by the numbers, and so for the operating budget, we're looking at a total budget of a little over $301 million, CIP budget being $50 million. And just to give some context, if you were to compare the current fiscal year '24, '25 budget that council approved a year ago, what we're proposing for the upcoming fiscal year is less than 1% higher than the adopted budget for this current fiscal year, and then for the general fund specifically, it's half a percent higher. And so, as we all know, costs have definitely gone up by more than a percent over the past year, but this really kind of highlights the, the efforts that we're taking with the cost-saving measures to, to curb expense growth in the upcoming fiscal year. Next slide. The following slide is the operating budget, kind of visually, and how that looks like by department, so I won't go through each one of these, but just, that's what that looks like. Next slide. And this is our five-year forecast that was presented in study session number two, no changes here, but this is what we're anticipating with the cost savings measures just for next year. So as mentioned in a prior study session, we are proposing cost savings measures just for one year, and you kind of see in the outside years that those cost savings measures are kind of removed, removed. And so, for fiscal year '25, we anticipate ending this current fiscal year with a deficit of about $2.3 million between our revenues and expenses, and so kind of the way to look at this is, the columns are your expenses, revenues are lines, the line going across, and so you ideally want that line up top to be above your columns. We're currently not there, that's kind of what is, the deficit spending that's been referred to. So for fiscal year '26, next fiscal year, we're anticipating a little under $9 million gap, and then on average, in the outside years, about $9 million or 6%, and again, highlighting, you know, just that we're looking at cost savings measures as part of this budget adoption, definitely the other side of this is really looking at enhancing our revenues to, to close that gap. As far as the reserves go, we're projecting that we end this fiscal year at 29%. Our policy calls for a 16% to 25% reserve with a goal of 20%, so end of this year, we'll be at 29, that's our projection, and at the end of next fiscal year, we're at 23%. And then, once you get into fiscal year '27, kind of assuming this plays out, we'd be below our policy at 13% by the end of fiscal year '27. Next slide. So in addition to the adoption of the budgets, the other item we're seeking council approval on is approval of the current pay schedule, and so this is kind of related to the Public Employee Pension Reform Act, where it requires the adoption of a publicly available salary schedule. There's some additional legislation as well that requires a, a call-out of executive compensations, which you'll see on the next slide, and then adoption of the salary schedule in the following slide, and meet these requirements. Next slide. And so this is the call-out, the executive salary schedule that I mentioned earlier, and with that, I'll pass it on to the Assistant City Manager to finish up the presentation.
Thanks, Ken. A lot of work goes into the budget, both on the staff's side and on the council's side, so I want to thank you, the city council, for your leadership in establishing policies and practices that have helped build and maintain a general fund reserve, which we're relying on now that we're deficit spending. Your strategic investment in the organization and the community is part of what, what makes Vacaville the vibrant community it is, and the goal of the organization is to provide high-quality services to the community, and we only can carry out that goal because we have council support, so thank you. We've also had an extraordinary level of collaboration with our department heads and staff as we work through the budget process, and identified areas where we can scale back, and delay or freeze positions to reduce the budget deficit, and just know that you have a really dedicated team. The budget team also deserves a big kudos for their ongoing commitment to protecting the city's fiscal stability, consistently running projections, identifying trends, and trying to find savings in a variety of places, while ensuring that we're still able to provide the services our community expects and deserves. Even though you'll be adopting the budget hopefully tonight, and the budget team will continue looking for areas where we can cut costs and improve efficiencies with the longer-term budget forecast in mind. Next slide. So, next steps. The budget team will continue to bring you quarterly budget updates and track the progress in terms of deficit spending. Because expenses are only one piece of the budget, we also plan to bring forward a discussion on enhancing revenues at a future meeting. That'll include things Ken already mentioned, setting fees, as well as exploring options and feasibility of a sales, possibly a sales tax or hotel tax measures. Next slide. And with that, I will turn it back to Ken.
And so the following slide is just the, the recommendation, so I won't read all of those. Next slide. And with that, we'd be happy to take any questions.
And thank you to the, you and to the entire team. This is, as a reminder to anyone in the audience or watching online, our budget wasn't as simple as these 12 slides, it's been a lengthy process that's the majority of the spring into now, and with at least three different sessions, so I just want to make that reminder to the public. So, and also appreciate the staff's attention to looking at how to, to tighten the belt. We know, we know that we need to, and so I do appreciate that. Before I open it up, does anybody on the council have any questions?
Comment.
Comment, okay. I'm going to open up to the public for any comment. Seeing that, I'll bring it back. Councilmember Sill.
Just, I, I know, we've, like Mayor mentioned, there's been a lot of different discussions, so just really thank you to all the department heads and staff throughout the city about being flexible on supporting certain programs and holding back on other ones, so I know that's not easy. There's a lot of pride and passion that goes into everything that you do, and everybody, everybody that you support. But I, again, I really do, I do, I deeply want to appreciate, express my appreciation that, you know, there truly is a team that, you know, there truly is a team commitment on how we best serve our, our residents and our city. So thank you all for the difference you continue to strive to make in the lives of everyone.
Right with, it's, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
So, Councilmember Silva, motion, do you want a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. This will get us starting into the next year, and with that, do we have any reports of the city manager?
No reports tonight, Mayor.
All right, so reports of the city council. I will, first and foremost, before I pass it on to Councilmember Silva to kick us off, just say thank you for stepping in during this time. You've, you've certainly been a great help to the staff, and your, your role and your leadership is in the interim role. As they say sometimes, be careful what you wish for. But Savita will start next Monday, and we're all looking forward to her joining the team, but appreciate, and I know on behalf of all, all the council, thank you, so. Councilmember Silva?
Likewise, thank you, Georgine. I know you're not going far, so we'll be bothering you as needed. The, two now, two announcements, one on Saturday for residents in the Markham area. There's gonna be four different dumpsters set out throughout the area. City staff, our community development team will be out there helping assist, you know, different residents, collecting some feedback. So really looking forward to seeing a good turnout of people kinda doing similar with Councilmember Wiley has put together in District 6 with District Dollars. So, it'll be the last time for a while, so people are expecting this to come, come, continue every year, it's likely not gonna happen. But I also wanna express my gratitude to, I'm not sure what department it is, but I know co-compliance is involved in it. There's a particular corner along Callan Street, people dump, and I'm really excited to see residents step up and take more liberty and, and control of making sure that the, the place that they call home is respected. So they have my full support and legal ways of, of doing that, and so, but also wanna appreciate staff for finding ways to do that. Other thing, just to let the council and the community know, on the Solano Yolo, sorry, Yolo Solano Air Quality District Management Group, there's three funding, three grant requests that were actually approved. So that was like a whole, whole long process, but that included funding to finally complete a crosswalk and ADA ramp at Kairos on Elm. So excited to look at that, see that come to fruition hopefully over the course of the next, course of the next year. Number two, funding for electric EV chargers, or to contribute towards that on the, that Colores Park and County Spot. So there's some funding that was allocated to that. And then the third one, which isn't directly to the city, but indirectly will help our residents, is funding an EV van for Boys and Girls Club to help transport folks. So just for everybody to know, the, they, the funding effort from the collective board, from representatives in half of Solano and Yolo County, the emphasis is really looking at how do we mitigate and lower emissions in, in the efforts to have cleaner air. So that's how they prioritize a lot of the, the requests for funding. Vacaville did put in the most requests, so I was happy to see that. Unfortunately, not enough money to go around, but definitely wanna thank everybody who put applications and presented that, so, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Stockton?
Yes, I wanted to wish all of the fathers a happy Father's Day. I probably had the best Father's Day that I've had in my life, surrounded by friends and family, and my son, who graduated high school. I know there's been lots of graduations and stuff, so it's always exciting to see, as a father, to see your kids grow up and, and do the things that they, they dream about doing, but also enjoy being with, with your parents for these types of things while they're still here. I know that can be, be difficult. We have 4th of July coming, I'm hoping people are responsible this year. I know that every year there's kind of like a big push for safe and sane, you know, not having fireworks and starting stuff on fire, please don't burn down our city. But I was wondering if the police chief might talk about another city council meeting that recently came about and something really amazing that our, that our neighbors to the Northeast have done for, for Vacaville.
Sure. Putting you on the spot.
Sorry, Chief.
That's okay, sir. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, thanks for having me. So last Tuesday, I was invited to go to Dixon City Council meeting to talk about their initiative to rename a park after Matt Bowen. And so after limited discussion, it went pretty quick, they voted 5-0 to approve it, overwhelming support to do it. And then, it's kind of a funny story, as I was walking out, somebody followed me out and said he's willing to sell his pig to, to give $7,000 towards, towards the, towards the program. So, they're looking at nonprofit ways to, to fund this, but Dixon City Council was very supportive of renaming a park, so.
Chief, thank you for sharing that, and thank you for everything that you continue to do for, you know, our, our department moving forward. I, I know the anniversary of that date's coming up, and it's a, it's a somber time for your people, so I appreciate Dixon doing that, I appreciate you being there and your leadership. How can people contact you or Dixon if they wanna contribute to make sure that, you know, they have what they need to be able to really make this what, you know, something to honor him?
Yeah, so we're, we're trying to, we're trying to put the groups together. There's a lot of nonprofit groups out there right now, the Vacaville Police Foundation being one of them. There's some, there's some outlying groups that we haven't had direct contact with, but I know those conversations are gonna be had in the next week or so, just to try to get, you know, the three or four main nonprofit groups to come together and see if they can come together to fund the, this park in the city of Dixon.
Awesome. Well, if you get some sort of flyer, or if they put out some sort of information with contact, could you please get that to us or distribute it to the city or something so that we can make sure that we can contribute or provide our community opportunities?
And July 11th is the one-year anniversary, and we will do just a solemn tribute out in the front steps of the PD.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Yeah, Chief?
Chief? Oh, that was the running of the torch?
Yes, my legs are hurting, ma'am.
Would you share it with everyone?
Yeah, so it's a Special Olympics torch run. We, we do it annually, just a, a moment to honor our Special Olympians. They come out and join us for segments of the run. So again, it was another, it was another good year. As I, as I get older and older, it's getting more and more difficult for me to do, but I promised that I would try to continue to do it until I retire, so it's a, it's a, it's a work in progress for me. But we all enjoy, we all enjoy it together.
Okay, great. Thanks for sharing.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief. Councilmember Wiley?
Just a few things that I wanna mention tonight, and I did mention the park event earlier from our South Town Association, and I just really have great things to say about our staff working to build neighborhood associations, and then in District 6, several of them have taken off. And so Ms. Joan is an excellent volunteer. Another person that's a great volunteer is Rita Deanda, and she also helps put together the District 6 newsletter. She's the vice, she's now the Chair of the Napa Solano Aging on, Council on Aging, and she helps in a lot of different ways. And I wanna say that this Sunday, she is going to be honored as the Solano County American Dream Award, because she's a naturalized citizen, she was born in Finland, and so Mike Thompson will be presenting her award on Sunday, and I'm gonna attend that. And so that's a Vacaville resident, Rita Deanda, and I'll do a press release so we can put that in the paper or something. And then I also, another park thing, we had the Pride Event on Sunday, and that was wonderful to have the big park to put it in, and the people, and, and so that was just a great thing on Sunday, and Vice Mayor presided great. And then was there at the kickoff for Creek Walk on this Friday night. And the other big thing, in this council chamber last Wednesday, we didn't have the council members sitting here, but we had the summer interns, and it's a great project with the staff. And so there were 20 students who were involved with all the departments with the summer interns, and they were all selected after we presented information about Sunshine Laws and Brown Act and why they need to be involved. They took their stand, and we actually voted. Sheila did a great job preparing an agenda, and all the people put it together. And so they, they discussed and voted on the fireworks item that we did a couple years ago, and so they had discussion on that. And so they saw how the council works, and we had public comment from people. So it was a great event last Wednesday, and that was a shout-out to another District 6 hard worker, Alice Freed, who put that together, and we've done it in Sassoone and Vacaville and the county, and so it's just great. And so I do appreciate all the work that the staff is doing with the summer interns, and you've had two weeks down and one week more to go or something, so, great. Thanks.
Great, yeah, thank you. Vice Mayor Chavon?
Thank you. I like it when she speaks first, and then all I can do, have to do is add statements, yeah. Okay, speaking of the, the students involved in summer at City Hall, this year, we even had a student to be the mayor, and I believe they even went through the process of electing the council members that took the seats here. And I have to thank Angelina over there, she served as the city manager, and we had the, was it Andrea?
Annie.
Annie, yes, was here as our legal, the legal council, and the youth really enjoyed it. And you know what's so amazing about that, is when they began to think on their own and come up and ask a question. Before Councilmember Wiley here, she would go over to different students and encourage them to get up. Then after a while, a couple of them got up on their own, so it, it really...
They got encouraged to come up?
They got encouraged, absolutely. And so, anyway, just, I won't talk any longer, I could, but I'll stop there.
It's always good to see the interns.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. It was great. Oh, and I'm sorry, have to thank Sheila. Sheila put everything together, and she, of course, presided in her role as the city clerk and gave the oath to all of the elected officials.
It's always good to have these programs, so.
Yes.
The only thing I had to report out, I won't go into any detail for time because it's gonna come in the future, is every month, STA Water Board, they, they meet. STA is, they're negotiating with how they're gonna work with the state on tolling, right? Most of us aren't used to, if you're living around here, having an express lane. The, the nice thing is, is the, the roads are going to be nice and open and wide with the extra lanes, but they're also going to be with specialized types of, you know, normally you could just drive through with a, with a, the card in your car, or in the past, you didn't even have to have one, they would track you. Well, not anymore. And so there's gonna be more information coming before September when everything goes live, but some of this was reported out through the Solano Transportation Authority, the agency that's STA. What, why is this important? More to follow. The, the board voted to adopt a pilot program for three years, and that is, is to do not only weekday tolling, but weekend tolling. And so there's pros and cons to all of it. All that information is available. There is some significant benefit for it because it's mostly commuters, and commuters work in the weekend, it allows, you know, the commute lanes seven days a week instead of five days a week, and there's some more benefits. Some more to come with that, and also some FAQ's and information so that anyone who's not used to it won't get caught up into the, the fact that in the future, when it does go live in September, it won't just be a carpool lane for hours. It'll actually be required to have the devices, and it will be an express lane. They're common all over the state, it's finally happening here, so. Anyway, more to come on that, but that's just a report out on STA. So with that, thank you to all the staff for the, the year-end budget and making sure this happened, and with that, we'll, we'll stand in recess. Goodnight, Vacaville.